Hello, thank you for attending today and welcome to this meeting of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, the last one of this year before the Christmas break. This meeting is of course open to the public and will be broadcast and recorded and it will be available for people to watch later on the council's website. It might also be possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting at a later time. We've received three petitions and six questions from members of the public and it's also great to see people in the public gallery here today as well. The agenda reports for today's meetings are available on the council's website and a small number of paper copies are also available. Please can we request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting and I'll have to make sure that I do the same as well. There's no fire test that's planned today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff and the assembly point is in Tudor Square. And please can I ask each committee member in turn to introduce themselves and I'll start with Craig.
Hi, my name is Craig Gamble-Pew. I'm councillor for Ecosfield Ward and a member of this committee.
Does it mean, huh? Yes. I'm Christine Gilligan-Cubel. I'm a councillor for Hillsborough Ward and I'm also a deputy chair of this committee.
I'm councillor for City Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Denise Fox, councillor for Burley Ward.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Richard Shaw, councillor for Beecham Greenhill Ward.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Andrew Sanger and I'm councillor for Forward Ward and I'm the group spokesperson on this committee.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Ian Oakland, councillor for Grace Park Ward.
And my name's Ben Miskell, I'm chair of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. And congratulations as well to Ruth for wearing a very festive jumper today. She's the only person who has made that effort today, so thank you. We'll move on to item one, which is apologies for absence. I don't believe that we've received any apologies for absence, just checking. No, we have received no apologies for absence at the moment. Do I see any other apologies for absence from people from the floor? No. That therefore takes us to item two, which would be an opportunity to ask whether we needed to exclude members of the public and press. And the meeting today is open to the public and there's no items on the agenda containing exempt information. Item three takes us to declarations of interest. Can I ask any members if they wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business today? And if so, can I please ask you to refer to the item of business and state whether it's a pecuniary or personal interest and outline the reasons for that declaration? Councillor Sanger.
So I was hoping that other people put their hands up first. Item 10, Kellam Neeps End Parking Review, a personal interest because my son owns and lives in a flat on Kellam Island.
Thank you very much councillor Sanger. And I don't see anyone else indicating to declare an interest as well. So that takes us on to item four, which is in your agenda packs. It is the minutes of our previous meeting and I am asking members to approve as a correct record the minutes of the meeting of our committee, which were held on the 15th of November 2023. They're on pages 11 to 16 of your agenda pack. Can these be approved as a correct record? Are we all agreed? I'm seeing lots of nods, absolutely. So those have been therefore passed as a correct record of our last meeting. That then takes us on to probably the most interesting part of our agenda, which is an opportunity for members of the public, citizens of this city, to ask questions and to receive petitions. We have received three petitions and six public questions for today's meeting. There is a maximum of 30 minutes for this item and I hope we'll be able to get through all of those within the allocated time. If not, we can ask the committee whether they'd be minded to extend that time to give more people an opportunity to speak. I should also say that I've also received a request on, at the end of item nine, to have a brief five-minute comfort break, because I know that our meetings can sometimes get very long. And if the meeting would agree, then we'll take a brief five-minute comfort break at the end of item nine. Is that okay? I can see people nodding, which is brilliant. That therefore takes us on to the public questions and petitions. Our first petition is from David Cronshaw and it's with regards to the Arundel Gate bus gate. However, I believe that Mr Cronshaw is not necessarily attending our meeting today and I don't think he's in the public gallery, so we'll make sure that he receives a written answer to his petition. Our second petition is with regards to Connect Sheffield, our city centre bus by Mr Roy Morris. And I believe that Mr Morris is in the chamber today, is that correct?
Apologies.
Apologies. That is my fault, apologies. You're entirely right. I'll just go back to where we were. Mr Cronshaw, we'll take you in a second if that's okay, that's entirely my mistake. We'll therefore move on to the petitions and come back to you. So the first petition is regards to the Forward Road 20 mile an hour zone and this is a petition that was collected by Lindsay McLennan, I believe. I hope I haven't mispronounced her surname, I probably have. Would you possibly be able to come to the microphone here? We can, we can help you with it, but you can just press the button and you should be able to speak up. I think you can press any button and see what surprise happens.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Nethergreen Infant School parents noticed that there was a 20 mile an hour consultation and we asked why Forward Road and Crimacar Lane is not included in that petition, just to say we fully support the 20 mile an hour speed limit across the Forward area. So on the PTA WhatsApp group, there was a strong support for the campaign. There is now a very active group of parents and local people around Forward who are asking that very question. Both head teachers quickly jumped on the campaign and given their support. Just so you know, I've got a little boy that started in reception at Nethergreen Infants this year. He loves the school, but we do hate the journey because it involves going up Forward Road. It's polluted, noisy, dangerous, stressful, and we just found that lots of other parents are feeling the same. So the group started talking to other local groups, we started leafleting, over 1,500 houses in Forward were given a leaflet and we started talking to people on doorsteps and it became very clear that it wasn't just parents that were concerned about the exclusion of those two roads and it didn't seem to make any sense. So we started to look into it a bit further, we discovered that serious road traffic accidents, we added them to a map and it became very obvious that the crashes are not on the side roads, they're on the main roads, most of them a few yards from Nethergreen Junior School on the road that is, or one of the roads that's not included. Forward Road and Crimacar Lane have two schools on or very close to the road, there are two nurseries, shops, petrol stations, crossings, junctions and several other community venues. There's lots of cars parked along the road and bus stops. There are continuously kids and older people trying to cross the road and many people cycling. It's clear that there is traffic mixing with vulnerable road users. My understanding that these roads aren't included because the average speed limit is over 24 miles per hour. And in the 2012 Sheffield 20 mile an hour speed limit strategy, it advises that you can't have a sign only 20 mile an hour speed limit. The strategy and the officer advice is based on outdated Department for Transport policy from over 10 years ago. I only discovered this when I started looking into it. Current best practice in the UN Stockholm Declaration, which the UK has signed up to, says where people and motor traffic mix, speed limits should be 20 miles an hour. Many UK cities, Bristol, Cambridge, Edinburgh, 21 of the 32 London boroughs, Oxfordshire, Wales, Cornwall, have all done this just using signs and the evidence shows that 20% to 60% reduction in slight, serious and fatal injuries. Sheffield's series injury in death rate, which is over 300 a year due to road traffic collisions, is one of the worst in the country. Changing Sheffield's transport policy to make 20 mile an hour default on main roads will go some way to improve Sheffield's terrible rating in road traffic collisions with just the use of signs. Just to reiterate, this is signs-only default 20 mile an hour across the city. Humps are not cost-effective or best practice for such a wide network as demonstrated in all those cities I just mentioned. We're calling for all councillors, all of whom which have speed limit-setting powers, to update Sheffield's policy of best practice and we urgently call for a signed default 20 mile an hour speed limit where people mix with motor traffic. And obviously, this includes the two roads where we started this discussion and research, Forward Road and Crimacar Lane. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your petition and for coming along today. Before I answer your question, I should say that we need to see a national change in approach about how we deal with 20 mile an hour zones. I do favour the approach taken by the Welsh Labour Government in reducing the speed limit from 30 to 20 miles an hour on roads where there are streetlights no more than 200 yards apart. A present introducing these schemes is unnecessarily costly and time-consuming for local authorities in England and in my view needs a national approach. It's also worth noting that your local MP, Olivia Blake, has been making the case with me about more 20 mile an hour schemes in her constituency and is in support of many of the issues that you have raised today. In direct answer to your question, we are in the consultation stages of the Forward 20 mile an hour zone, so no final decision on the scheme boundaries have yet been made by this committee. After reviewing some additional speed data, we're looking at the possibility of including Crimacar Lane in this scheme. The 20 mile an hour speed limit strategy that was first adopted by the council in 2012 and updated in 2015, which you referenced, the current policy gives the following criteria for roads. A and B classified roads, major bus routes and roads with an existing speed limit of 40 miles an hour or more will not be made subject to a 20 mile an hour speed limit and that there will be a presumption against including C-class roads, which are generally local distributor roads within new 20 mile an hour speed areas. Speed limits should reflect the character of the road with which they apply but must be realistic. The relevant DFT guidance notes the importance of existing speeds when designating new speed limits and it says if the mean speed is already at or below 24 miles an hour on a road, introducing a 20 mile an hour speed limit through signing alone is likely to lead to general compliance with the new speed limit. This strategy applies to residential sign-only 20 miles an hour schemes only and we are not saying that this cannot lower speeds on more major roads. However, to do this, additional speed reduction measures such as speed humps or camera enforcement would be required and the council does not necessarily have the budget to do this on all major roads within Sheffield. It's my view that we need a change in approach nationally to give councils the ability to lower speed limits on these streets without the need to install costly engineering solutions. It may be useful for you to know that South Yorkshire Police have made it clear that they would object to any speed limit order for a sign-only scheme on roads that do not meet the above criteria, as well as criteria in relation to average speeds. We cannot progress with any speed limit order without the support of the police, I'm informed. This may be something that you may wish to speak to the chief constable or police and crime commissioner about, it could also be something that you may wish to raise with our new deputy mayor for policing when they're appointed this summer. Following the receipt of the petition, the senior transport planner has been working with the road safety team and police as well as requesting some additional speed surveys to be carried out to see whether anything can be taken forward in relation to Forward Road, which does show the value of people bringing petitions to this committee. I hope that this is positive as I want to see speeds reduced on more streets in Sheffield. Subject to further developments of the scheme in response to both the feedback that we've received and further investigations that officers are undertaking, we'll consider the scope of the final scheme at the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee. We do want to thank you for your petition today and I understand that councillor Sanger would also like to respond. Councillor Sanger.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Lindsay for the petition. And clearly, we will be making a decision on the 20 mile per hour Forward scheme at the next meeting, so I don't want to say anything that, you know, that prejudges what we would decide there. And clearly, the petition raises a number of points, but let's just remind ourselves of them. Firstly, in terms of the two distributor roads, which are, as you say, C-class roads, so they're not A or B. So that's the first thing. I'm, you know, as local councillor, my colleagues, councillor Sue Austin and councillor Cliff Woodcraft are clearly listening very hard in terms of, and making sure that I'm giving all the relevant information from constituents, ready for the January meeting as well as listening to the detailed officer response. But clearly, there is a nursery on Crimacar Lane and there is a real challenge in terms of dropping off and collecting that from that nursery. So I think there's clearly a case there. In terms of Forward Road, my children attended Nethergreen Junior School many years ago and obviously I've been a councillor in the ward since 2004 and finding a solution for Nethergreen Junior School, given the challenge on Forward Road, junction with Nethergreen Road and the junction with Tom Lane. I understand from transport officers, it's not the highest-scoring junction in terms of road safety. So I'm very keen that when the report comes in, that we look at what can be done because I've been working with, I've been listening to that school for 20 years and there's never been a solution. This is an opportunity to find something to improve road safety for parents and children at Nethergreen School. So that's in terms of the Forward perspective. In terms of the wider perspective, clearly the council needs to be using up-to-date legislation and up-to-date best practice from around the world. And if there are other councils in England that have moved to a much more, a much more 20's plenty approach, we should be thinking, how do we adapt to that? As you have said yourself, Chair, Wales and Scotland have different rules, but clearly they've found a way of reducing unnecessary speed in urban areas, yeah, across the urban areas of Wales and it's certainly something that from a national perspective, I would be looking to support. So I think, to summarise, big thanks to the petitioners, big thanks for the fact they've looked into this in great detail and obviously they've got a number of signatures, but also the extra work they've done in terms of challenging our council officers and also the national government in terms of making sure that we have roads that are safe as possible. As the petitions have said, Sheffield's road safety statistics are not great and this could be something where we could make some changes to our approach and some of that will be in at the January meeting and some of that is clearly a wider issue in terms of policy. And I think, I look forward to the full response from officers in terms of getting on to the work plan in future. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you councillor Sanger. I saw councillor Gamble-Pew also wishing to make an intervention.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I wanted to thank the petitioners for raising this. I've got a particular interest in this because we've just had the introduction of a 20 mile an hour zone in Chapel Town, which is part of my own ward, and the similar issue there, that the main road that goes right through the middle of the estate, that's all where all the side roads have been reduced to 20 miles an hour, is the road where everybody on that estate knows that that's where the traffic is, that's where the danger is, that's where people are scared to cross over walking their dogs. And when we did, so I've got, I think it's a point of order actually, because when we did the consultation, we were told by transport officers that there's absolutely no way within the current law and regulations that that road, being a kind of main road through the estate, could have its speed limit reduced. And the information that's been brought by the petitioners seems to suggest that actually if we update our policy, then we do have the ability to do those things. Because for people living across Sheffield where we're doing these things, it just doesn't make any sense. And I hear all the technical responses and I'm still sitting here as an elected member thinking, it doesn't make sense. So the point of order, I think, is just to ask, what is it that the petitioner is requesting us to do as a policy committee? And what is the, what is the constitutional remit of the policy committee in response to petitions? Because in full council, it's, you can either agree to do what the petitioners want, refer it on or do nothing. So what is the petitioner asking and what is our remit? What are we able to do? Please, thank you.
Thank you councillor Gamble-Pew. I think it was important that we were able to allow members an opportunity to respond. It isn't normally what we do. However, you raised some really important and quite pertinent questions about our 20 mile an hour schemes across the city, which I think we do need to take back as members and seek clarity on. So we will certainly do that. Thank you very much Lindsay for bringing your petition, it's really, really appreciated. That would then take us to our second petition, which is from David Cronshaw on the issue of the Clean Air Zone, but I believe that David is not here today. So therefore, we go to our questions and our first question from someone who's here is about the Connect Sheffield bus and that's by Roy Morris. Roy, are you okay to come up to, come up to the microphone? Sorry councillor Gamble-Pew.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I raised the point of order, I don't know if that's the correct lingo, but I was asking, what is the remit of a policy committee in relation to petitions that are brought by the public? The public come and say, we want you as a policy committee to do X, right? I'm not clear what we were being asked to do by that petition and I'm also not sure what our constitutional powers are in response to public petitions. Can we get an answer to that? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to ask the interim acting director of legal governance to respond.
Yes, I'm just reading the petition scheme. It really depends obviously on the substance, but policy committees can make decisions or recommendations on changes to policy. I suggest in relation to this, given that you've got essentially a presentation and a written answer, any changes would take more substantial treatment than today's presentation and response would allow. So if there's a desire and it sounds like there is a call for action for this to be looked at, then the way forward would be to incorporate it into the work programme and examine it and then bring a future report to the committee.
Thank you very much Robert for the clarification. So councillor Gamble-Pew, it does seem that the correct course of action is for us to raise this matter in the discussion that we'll have later on the work programme, if that's okay with you. And I can see councillor Sanger also nodding. Apologies, Mr Morris, I was asking you if you could make your contribution, you had a question related to the Sheffield Connect Bus.
Thanks very much Chair and Committee for giving me your time. It's quite a complicated issue, so I'll try and be as brief as possible. The question basically, how can we ensure that Connect Sheffield fulfils its purpose and fully serves the people of Sheffield? For those who don't know, Connect Sheffield is a bus going around the city centre, which, and its purpose I think, as far as I can see, is to improve access for people who are physically challenged by getting around the city centre. It's to replace the city centre buses and it's also to enhance the Clean Air Zone in that it's at the moment hybrid, but I believe is planned to be electric. And like I said in the previous meeting, I think there are three groups of people, basically all of us, who will benefit from this policy being fully implemented. Firstly, the public, because it's a public service. Secondly, it's good for campaigners like me from Better Buses in that we have a positive story to tell people. And thirdly, I think it benefits the council because it reinforces the impression, or gives the impression that the council is going in a certain direction, has a sense of vision, has a sense of a direction at which, as I've said before, doesn't always come across to the public, considering some of the comments that happen in the Star. People, there are actually people who say that the council is trying to destroy the city centre. Ridiculous, I know, but if that's the impression, then I think we have to together work against that impression that's being given. So there are some improvements, as far, I catch the bus fairly regularly and there are more passengers, although not nearly enough. It's good that it's got a depot in Sheffield rather than having to come from Honly every day, which makes it more reliable in bad weather, I think. And hopefully, I think, I don't know if they're still on the agenda, but they're going to be using totally electric buses rather than hybrid, which will be good. So points that I want to bring up, the route, I gather, I'm getting the impression that the route isn't yet fully established. It's good that it's not going down Trippet Lane anymore because from what the drivers say, nobody ever caught it from there. Am I right in thinking that it's going to eventually go along Rockingham Street rather than turning left onto Carver Lane, then right, then left again? I remember in one plan I read that there was, that that road, Rockingham Street, was going to be one-way and just, or mainly public transport. So the current stops, I don't think, I don't get the impression that the number of stops is really serving the public. There'll be a large proportion of people who are going to use the Connect Bus, who are seriously physically challenged. And I do think that the bus needs to stop at any official stop because somebody getting off the bus into town needs to have that Connect Bus stopping at the stop they've got off. They can't be walking to it and at the moment, the number of stops is very limited. Publicity. I talk to people when I'm collecting signatures for petitions and whatever you're in town and the one thing people keep saying is, we miss the buses going into town. They don't know about Connect. I've talked to a couple of people here today who've taken the trouble to come, they don't know about Connect. It really does need better publicity. There needs to be publicity at the station, there needs to be publicity in the universities, there needs to be published, a whole blast of publicity so that people say, okay, we haven't got buses in the city centre, but you've got a substitute which is useful and which is free and which is going to serve the purpose. I was talking to a driver the other day and who said, well, the name doesn't catch, Connect Sheffield, Connect Sheffield, doesn't really say what it's about, whereas back to the old name, Freebie, actually, people think, oh, that's good, it's free, must be good. And it relates to a folk memory of the Freebie, which was an effective city centre bus. So seriously, I think we should consider renaming it. The other thing, I think very long term, would be a bus going in the opposite direction. The station isn't covered, the Arundel Gate isn't covered. If it had a bus going the other way, admittedly it would have to go a long way round to get back to the centre along St Mary's Gate, but it would be useful and it would establish the idea of Connect being something that is there for people a bit more like Manchester where they have four, don't they? Have I run out of time? I think I have, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Morris, for your question. I'm glad to hear that you're an advocate for our Connect Sheffield City Centre Bus. We know that the city centre is changing more with new parts of the heart of the city development being opened and coming on stream at the moment, Fargate having that multi-million pound facelift and a contractor that's been appointed to develop the old Castle site. Our city centre, of course, is on the up and the evidence of the increased footfall is really evident when you see the Christmas markets and the wonderful things that are in place at the moment. The Connect Bus, as you rightly say, is really important with that ambition and it's also really important with our ambition to bring 20,000 new homes into the city centre. And to that effect, I was really pleased to see David Walsh, as you mentioned, the Star front page spread on the takeoff of our city centre in the Star on Saturday and it's really positive, it does show that our city centre is on the up. You raised some really good questions about the Connect Sheffield City Centre Bus and I'm pleased to say that in the new year, we'll be relaunching the service with new zero emissions e-buses and I have seen the pictures of them and they do look very exciting. Details on the routes and the frequencies will depend on the tender costs, so they yet to be confirmed. But I certainly do share your ambition, and I'm sure this committee does as well, about enhancing that service and just how integral it is to what we offer in the city centre. We expect more news on this in early in the new year, but I'd expect that this would also sit alongside a refreshed communication strategy to make even more people aware of this excellent service, which I think was the desire in your question as well. So thank you very much for... So thank you very much for your question, Mr Morris. And of course, I would value an opportunity to meet with you outside the context of this meeting as well, if you get in touch with me.
Thanks so much. That's great.
Thank you very much. That therefore takes us on to our next question, which is related to Moskwa Cross Road. Now, this is an item of business later on our agenda, and we do have two questions, both from Patricia Stubbs and Deanna Mallinson, who I met a short while ago. And if I could just invite both of them to come to the microphone now, that would be brilliant. Thank you.
Firstly, thank you very much for allowing time for us to put our questions, and also for the opportunity we had to send a statement for you all in advance, which I hope you've had a chance to look at. We're very grateful for your attention. I've got a number of questions here, and they're all asked on behalf of three organisations, which is Friends of the Peak District, the Peak District Green Lanes Alliance, of which I'm the chair, and the Peak Horsepower Bridleway Group. And we've all objected to the form that the proposal for a traffic regulation order on Moskwa is being put at the moment, because it does not include excluding motorbikes. And also, I'd just like to note that other objectors are the parish council, which is Bradfield, and the Ramblers. Right, the first question. The National Park Authority has made seven traffic regulation orders excluding all types of motor vehicles from routes like Moskwa, including the exclusion of motorbikes. To keep prohibited vehicles out, the Peak Park only uses signage, it does not use barriers. Its monitoring data shows that more than 90% compliance with the TROs. So the first question is, why does Sheffield need barriers to make TROs to keep motor vehicles out, when the National Park Authority has demonstrated that they're not necessary? Do I go on through my questions, or do they get answered one by one? Sorry.
Yeah, if you could, if you could give us all of your questions together, and then we'll both give you a response, that would be brilliant. Thank you.
Okay, still on barriers. The committee paper says that one of the reasons that the proposed TRO does not cover motorbikes is because, and I'm quoting, "There are no physical restraint measures that restrict solo motorcyclists but allow other users through." That's what the committee paper says. But the committee paper doesn't mention or show the barriers that are in place at Whiningbrook, which is a combination of a lockable gate, that keeps out the four-by-fours, and a horse hop that excludes motorcycles, sorry, a horse hop that allows horses in, and an A-frame barrier that keeps out the motorbikes. And that is used by other authorities. Admittedly, you need a wide space, but there's no reason at Moskwa why that space could not be created if you insist on barriers, which we don't think you need at all. Number three, the Moskwa route actually is exceptional. It's all grass with no underlying stone or rock, and it's on a hill. It's exceptional because it is grassy. This is very rare for these unsealed highways in the national park. This makes it peculiarly vulnerable to damage by powerful modern motor vehicles in wet weather, and that includes the traction, gouging, and wheel spin of motorbikes, because they have to rev hard to get up the hill. Peak Park monitoring data shows that two-thirds of the motor vehicles that are using and damaging Moskwa are in fact solo motorcycles. The committee paper now concedes that motorbikes are damaging the route. We originally told that there were no grounds for excluding motorbikes, because they weren't causing damage, but the committee paper no longer says that. It talks about motorbikes causing less damage, and four-by-fours causing the majority of the damage, which is possibly true, but the paper now concedes, officers concede, that damage is being caused. So the question is, given that Sheffield now recognises that motorbikes are damaging this peculiarly vulnerable route, why is Sheffield willing to tolerate continuing use and damage by motorbikes in the wettest parts of the year? A quick one, some authorities putting in seasonal TROs have a flex, they design it so it's flexible, so that if it's a much, much wetter summer than usual, and the damage starts earlier, they can actually bring in the restriction earlier. So the question there is, will you consider this? Now, the Peak District Vehicles Group says it will support the traffic regulation order, but only because it excludes motorbikes. But at a meeting that was convened by Sheffield officers last year, which I attended along with all the user groups, there was no objection to any group present to the inclusion of motorcycles. It was all vehicles, everyone standing in that terrible quagmire, which is Moskwa Cross. Everybody said that all motor vehicles should be excluded. So that was the position at that point. My question there was, were you aware of that as committee members, that that was the position when this was first considered? Yes, the Peak Park Local Access Forum originally did not support the TRO as proposed, because it excludes motorbikes, but they then withdrew that objection on the proviso that you would monitor the route. If you don't do it, if you, if today you don't agree to include motorbikes, you're going to be coming back after monitoring another year of damage and so on, to having to make this same decision all over again, because excluding motorbikes is not going to solve the problem. Is that a good use of your resources? My next question is about the statutory duty of Sheffield as the highway authority to have regard to the purposes of the national park. That's under the 1995 Environment Act. In all your decisions, you're obliged to have regard to the purposes of the national park. And if there's a conflict between the two purposes, one is conservation, the other's creating opportunities to enjoy the special qualities of the national park. The Act also says that you have to put conservation first. So my question is on that, is where have you demonstrated so far that you have had regard to the purposes of the national park, and indeed have regard to the primary purpose, which is conservation? A particular question that Friends of the Peak District wanted to be asked was this. I didn't know this, but apparently, a new act in December of this year, it's called the Levelling Up and Regeneration Act, is going to change the current duty that the authority has in relation to the national park. They're going to change it from having to have regard to the purpose of the park into a duty to further the purposes of the national park. It's a much stronger duty that will apply from later, well, this month. So the question there is, is Sheffield willing to adopt the spirit of the enhanced duty now, and show in relation to Moskwa how its proposals to exempt motorbikes is actually furthering the purposes of the national park? My next question is about the grounds for the traffic regulation order. I hope I haven't got this wrong, but I think the grounds that you're planning to use are simply to prevent damage to the road. Well, we would argue there are many other grounds that go well beyond that. One of them is to prevent the use of the road by vehicular traffic of the kind, which is unsuitable having regard to the character of the road. As I explained, the character of this road is extraordinarily vulnerable, on grass, on a hill, easily damaged. Another ground you might want to use is preserving the character of the road where it's specially suitable for the use of persons on horseback. Another one, and it's one frequently used by the national park, is preserving or improving the amenities of the area through which the road runs. And the final one you may well want to use is, if you want to demonstrate that you're supporting the purpose of the national park, is the traffic regulation order for the purposes of conserving or enhancing the natural beauty of the area. That includes flora, fauna, geological and physiological features. So the question here is, why are you not looking at these other grounds for the TRO? Nearly at the end of my questions, three more. Are you aware that Moskwa Cross Road is an ancient packhorse route, and therefore, an important part of cultural heritage? And I also want you to know whether, how many members of the committee have had the opportunity to visit Moskwa Cross Road, because I think if you go and see it, you'll be absolutely horrified. And I wondered why there were no photographs in the committee paper. That's the end of my very long list of questions, but thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much for your question. Because the nature of your question is quite similar to that of, I think, your colleague, Diana, is it possible for her to also ask her question, then we can answer collectively? You're more than welcome to continue to sit there if you're able to that.
Do you want to ask us any questions? I don't know whether you do that under your protocols.
Unfortunately, this is just an opportunity, because we're quite busy in terms of the business and the formal decisions that we have to take, there's an opportunity to pose a question and then get a response. Hopefully, we can also continue to have a dialogue outside this meeting as well. But if you want to continue to sit there, we can give you an answer, but we'll also get your colleague Diana to ask her questions, please.
That's fine. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Hi, Diana.
Thank you very much, committee. I'm Diana Mallinson, the secretary of the Green Lanes Environmental Action Movement. And my first question relates to one of Patricia's, in that Patricia was talking about the additional reasons which you can use to make TROs. And I noted that in your report, in paragraph 4.3, you've added three more of, three of these purposes, the prevention of damage, sorry, to the, the single prevention of damage purpose, which is given in the proposal. To that, you've added the avoidance of danger, facilitating passage of any class of traffic, and preventing use by vehicular traffic, which is unsuitable. And in paragraph 4.4, you've added three more. You'll say it will preserve the character of the byway and the area's natural beauty, i.e. it will restore the grassy state that it had in 2012, and preserve the area's natural beauty, and make the route more attractive to users, i.e. improve the amenity of the area. Again, three more of the purposes available for a permanent TRO. Recent guidance from the British Parking Association endorsed by the Minister of State for Transport says that your statement of reasons, which you published in August, should ideally refer to these purposes, because the statement of reasons is what consultees should use to work out what you, the authority, are trying to do with a TRO. Our view is that the seasonal nature of the TRO as proposed, and the non-prohibition of motorcycles, especially the latter, mean that it will not achieve these additional purposes, especially it won't prevent use which is unsuitable, it, it won't preserve the character of the byway, or restore the natural beauty of the area, it won't improve the amenities of the area. Motorcyclists cause some of the ruts on the byway, and they also drive off the route onto the adjacent pasture. Wet weather in the summer months, coupled with continued recreational motor vehicle use, will also affect the character of the route and the natural beauty and amenity of the area, as demonstrated by the failure of the levelling and reseeding, which the council has done annually since 2012. So my first question is, will you therefore reconsult on the TRO proposal, so that you can explain to consultees how the TRO will meet these additional purposes in your statement of reasons? And secondly, would, will you also consider reconsulting on a TRO proposal, which would allow you flexibility in extending the duration of the seasonal closure period, if rainfall in summer months increases, as it has done in some years since 2012, 2013? And finally, if you decide to accept the recommendation in the report and make the TRO as proposed, will you, the authority, monitor the surface condition, i.e. the type of ruts, their depth, and their spread across the route in the four open months and the four closed months of each year, and see how this correlates with Met Office rainfall data for Sheffield? And will you make a temporary TRO if there continues to be damage? Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, for both of your questions, and the work, of course, that you both do on behalf of the Peak District and those of us here who enjoy it. And also thank you as well on behalf of the committee for the information that you circulated in advance of item 11, which I think will be helpful in our discussions and deliberations. In answering your response, I've consulted with technical officers in drawing together a response for you. As a council, it's our experience across a range of traffic and restrictions, particularly those that restrict or regulate movement, is that it is preferable that these are complemented with engineering measures to ensure that, where possible, they are self-enforced and not subject to abuse. South Yorkshire Police, and this also has a similarity to the last question that we had, or petition we had earlier today, expect that all traffic orders to be, as much as practicable, self-regulating, as these, this doesn't place an additional strain on the limited enforcement resources. We cannot make any comment on restrictions implemented by other highways authorities or enforced by other police services. We are, however, aware of physical barriers that restrict modes such as motorbikes, but we do not have sufficient evidence on this route to show that solo motorcycles specifically are damaging the route enough to warrant the prohibiting of that access. Obviously, that will be a matter that we'll be able to discuss later in item 11, and I'd look forward to working with you on this issue. The committee report does not specifically state that solo motorcycles are causing damage to the route. However, we are keen to keep this under review and to enter into further dialogue with you and other groups on this. It's important to say that we would be willing to consider consulting on such a restriction, should it be required at a later stage. Implementing the restrictions as proposed will mean that we are able to assess the success of this, and how much, how much of the damage is related to motorcycles. Having talked to members from other political groupings from this committee, I think that that move, it would be broadly supported, however, that will be subject to a discussion that we'll have later at the committee. Officers that attended the site meeting have stated that whilst those attending may have agreed to a TRO covering all motorised vehicles, that the site meeting did not also include solo motorcycle user groups. As we do not have sufficient evidence on this route to show that solo motorcycles specifically are damaging the route to warrant prohibiting that access, officers consider that it would be unfair to promote a prohibition of solo motorcycles at this stage. Prohibiting motor vehicles except for solo motorcycles allows us to properly understand the direct impact of solo motorcycles. Apart from a small number of motor vehicles requiring access to adjacent land, solo motorcycles were the only motorised mode of transport with access. Subject to the decision by committee on this issue, it is, if it's implemented and the monitoring of the scheme, Sheffield City Council gains will be evidence that solo motorcycles could use the land, use the lane, and we will be able to monitor that accordingly. The different statutory requirements have been considered, and from the information available to us, we believe that the proposed restrictions do support the aim of conserving and enhancing the national park. However, in considering the removal of access rights, we believe that the significant improvements in condition will be from removing four-by-four vehicles from this route. In dry conditions, the route can be used by all modes, that it, that it is not, that is not to say that this position will be maintained in perpetuity, and consequently, it may be reviewed at some point in the future. Additional potential benefits have been described within the committee reports, such as preserving the character of the byway and the natural beauty of the area, and improving the amenity of the area, as you have mentioned. These are benefits that can be achieved by the proposed restrictions, reducing damage to Moskwa Cross Road. We'll continue to visit the route each month and take photographs, as we've been doing for the past couple of years. We would make a TRO if we at any point are, A, need to safeguard the public, because the route has become dangerous to use, or B, need to exclude the public from the route in order to carry out repairs safely. Having said all this, I would be keen to meet with you in the future, and I'm sure that other members of the committee would as well. We may also, depending on the outcome of our discussions and deliberations today, also want to organise a committee visit to Moskwa Cross Road in order to gain an even better understanding of some of the additional issues that you've raised with us. And I can see some members of the committee nodding. Thank you very much for your question today on this important issue, which we're discussing later as well. That therefore takes us to our next That therefore takes us to our next set of questions, which are with regards to the Archer Lane closure. And if I could invite Sally Skelton and Alison Teal to come to the microphone and give us your questions. If we could have one and then the other, that would be brilliant in order to give you both a response. Thank you.
Thank you for answering my question. First question, Archer Lane closure was the key to the success of the Nether Edge Low Traffic Neighbourhood Scheme. Yet the committee decided to reopen Archer Lane based on the number of objections received. My question is, why were the less successful Crooks and Walkley schemes passed in full when they had a greater number of objections? My second question, why was child safety not even considered when you decided to reopen Archer Lane to nearly 3,000 vehicles a day? My question number three, the council has said there is a climate emergency. Yet your committee stopped a scheme that reduced traffic by 5,000 car journeys a day. Please, could you explain?
Thank you Chair. On the 20th of September, this committee, with the credible exception of Green Party councillors, decided to prioritise the voices of drivers living mostly outside of Nether Edge and chose to enable them to drive on narrow residential roads to avoid congestion on arterial routes. However, the officers' reports made clear that the closure of Archer Lane had a positive effect, encouraging active travel and making roads safer for children, pedestrians and cyclists. How can members of the committee justify ignoring the officers' technical expertise and vote to reopen Archer Lane, which is the most vital aspect of the Nether Edge Low Traffic Neighbourhood Scheme's success? Why did you disregard the empirical evidence in favour of drivers who do not even live in Nether Edge? My second question, how is the council going to meet its climate and nature targets when this committee has caved into the small, unrepresentative but loud group of motorists and anti-cycling campaigners against the closure of Archer Lane? It sets a very bad precedent that will prevent any future schemes that will be required to be, sorry, I lost my place. That will be required to be able to meet the targets. With regard to a call to action, we would like the committee to withdraw the amendment to Nether Edge Low Traffic Neighbourhood and close Archer Lane to motor vehicles in accordance with the evidence and officer recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to our meeting today and for the correspondence that you have sent to members of the committee on the issue. As you know, the council brought in an external contractor to conduct a report into the Nether Edge Active Neighbourhood Scheme. That report came before this committee in September and showed that there was greater support for the schemes in Crooks and Walkley. Crucially, in both Crooks and Walkley, there was demonstratable positive behaviour change in that area. With regards to Nether Edge, in response to the trial closure of Archer Lane, only 31% of residents felt positively towards the road closure, compared to 70% positively for the interventions on Salter Lane and 71% for Osborne Road crossings. This is why we as a committee opted to end the trial closure of Archer Lane and make permanent two popular crossings. Whilst we appreciate that you may be unhappy with this, we have had to take an approach that considered those who lived in a wider area and not just the immediate locality of the trial. With regards to your second point about safety, the September committee report included some initial data on collisions. Typically, for transport projects, personal injury collision data for at least the most recent three-year period would be considered adequate to be able to identify collision patterns. However, the council still made pre and post-implementation comparisons of casualty numbers in and around the Nether Edge area between June and December in 2021, which was the pre, versus the June and December 2022 post-period. The information available does not suggest that the Nether Edge Active Neighbourhood Project had a significant impact on personal injury collisions. During its implementation, the overall number of collisions did not change. In relation to Archer Lane, there were no collisions between June and December 2022. This compares with four collisions in an equivalent six-month period in 2022 on Crooks Valley Road between Hardcore Road and Oxford Street, which led to this location being a high priority site and a local safety scheme is currently being designed which will be implemented in 2024. It's important to say that when people in Nether Edge and Sharrow were asked about their perceived impact on the safety of walkers and cyclists of their active travel measures, more responses said that there'd been a negative impact on people's perception of safety of walkers and cyclists due to the trial closure. We must assess and prioritise locations for measures according to certain criteria. The most important one of these relates to the prevention of collisions, particularly those recorded as serious or fatal. We analyse all the incident data we receive from our partners and using that data, we prioritise our budget on schemes in these locations that have a history of previous collisions. Although we cannot know where the next collision may occur, it's more likely to happen if a location having a collision history, a history than one or few, than one with few or none.
You're not answering my question.
Apologies, I appreciate that the answer might not necessarily be what you would want, but it is, it is, it is an answer. And I will continue. Road safety is of concern everywhere, but it is notable that some of our most pressing road safety concerns are in our most deprived communities. Finally, with regards to your point on the climate emergency, I hope that you will stay and hear our discussions later on item nine, which looks at the progress that we have made as a city towards our climate goals. It's important to say that the trial closure of Archer Lane did not see an overall reduction of car journeys. It simply dispersed them and created problems elsewhere.
I don't know, it didn't.
People were just taking different routes.
Read the report.
Apologies, I didn't interject when you were speaking and I expect that you'd also give the same courtesy to me. Whilst this is not the outcome that you would have hoped for, we hope that you will get behind the council in the many exciting active travel schemes that we're introducing present across the city. And thank you very much for your question today.
How can we trust you?
Thank you very much. We will move on with our agenda today. Just for the information of the committee, we did also receive another petition related to the Kellerman Neepsend Parking Scheme by Ruby Nimmo. That unfortunately Ruby is not here with us today and therefore she'll receive a full written response to that. We then move on to the next item of our agenda today, which is item six, which is member questions. There's a maximum time, 10 minutes for the whole item of business. Written questions myself as Chair of the committee have to be submitted in advance of this meeting and I understand that no questions have been submitted in advance. Item seven is our next item, which is the work programme. And Amanda Clayton from Democrat Services is going to present the report to us. Amanda.
Thank you Chair. I'll keep it very brief. The amendments are listed on page 21 for your approval. And there's nothing further to add at this stage.
Thank you very much for running us through the work programme. I can see councillor Sangha indicating to speak.
Thank you Chair. Can I, can I thank officers for the work that they're doing, they continue to do on the work programme? And obviously, as I've been a critic in the past, I'm very pleased that we've now got the agendas down below, 250 pages. I think that's really good. I think that's where we should sort of be aiming for. I also think it's really important that we have a year-long programme of items that we try and achieve. And I think we were far too ambitious last year. I think we'd be more realistic this year. So I thank the Chair and the officers for all the work on that. I just really want to take up the two points from the petitioners. I mean, the first obvious point is on page 25, I'm not entirely clear what we're talking about in, at the February meeting. And I think maybe that's just the printed version. I've just, maybe this printed version is different to what was in the, in the electronic version. But we do need to make sure that the forward 20 mile per hour and the, and the high green 20 mile per hour schemes do come back to this committee before the end of March. And whether that's in February, March, I don't really mind. I mean, we've always been talking about January, but by January, actually, we meant February. But I think the other point, and I would support what councillor Gamble-Pew was saying, I just wonder whether in terms of the March meeting, we can have a, an additional report that picks up the issue the petitioners are wanting to say that our policy, our 2012 policy has been superseded by later government information and, you know, by the Stockholm Declaration. So that there are things that we should be including in our highway schemes in terms of moving towards 20 mile per hour in residential areas that we are, that is not in the current policy and whether we should have a, an additional paper in March so we can pick these points up and give officers time to, time to reflect on what the petition has asked for. So there's two separate points. When are we doing forward and high green? And then, and then secondly, the wider 20 mile per hour. And I think that the final point is the items on page 28. It would be really good to try and cram them into the February, March schemes because the more of these we can agree this year, the better. And so whoever's on this committee next year, in May, June, can come up with a year programme without having lots of residual items. And I'm a little concerned Chair, as a final remark, that there are a few items that have been lost that, you know, were floating around and for discussion and they're now off the, off the table. So just be clear where they have gone and, and making sure that we leave a legacy to our successors in, in May, May, June in terms of their work plan. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Sangha. I think councillor Gamble-Pew wants to come back on the second point potentially about the 20 mile an hour zone. You also raised a point about interventions with, because of 20 mile an hour zones in forward as well. That we'll seek to clarify in a second. Councillor Gamble-Pew.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I would just like to second that proposal that we should fit in to one of our meetings before the end of municipal year. A report to consider changing our policy on 20 mile an hour zone. I've also got another point that I'd like to raise on the work plan. Shall I raise that now?
If you would councillor Gamble-Pew.
So unless I'm misreading, I can only see, in terms of carbon reduction, I can see that in the March meeting agenda, we're scheduled to be looking at one more of the decarbonisation route maps, which is for energy generation and storage. I'm really dissatisfied and unhappy that, that would mean that we are, would be leaving this municipal year, still not having had before this committee the full suite of route maps. I'll make some, some further political points that I want to make later when we get to the, the annual report item. But to my mind, making a route map for how you get somewhere on a journey is something you should do, you know, at least at the start of the journey. And this is, this is a climate emergency that we declared in 2019. We can't go into the 2024, 2025 municipal year without the maps. I mean, I'm struggling to moderate my language here, such is my frustration Chair. But I would really like to know how we can reprioritise our time. Last month in our meeting, we, we left early. We were very pleased that we, we didn't need to use the full time allocated to us. There was nothing. We seemed to have taught about nothing to do with climate substantively for several months. And now we, we kind of look at heading into the end of the municipal year, not having adequately even worked out our plan and map of how we're going to achieve what we've set out to achieve. We need to do something about this. It's supposed to be a climate emergency. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gamble-Pew. Obviously, we've got item nine where we are discussing the annual climate report and I'll hope that we're able to bring those items to the fore during that discussion. I think with regards to the 20 mile an hour strategy and bringing that back to the March committee, do I see agreement from the committee to add that to the work programme for our March committee? I'm seeing lots of nods. So we would seek to add that and let's add a report about the 20 mile an hour strategy to our March meeting. There was also an additional item as well with regards to forward and high green and the 20 miles an hour zones there. Can I just ask with regards to that, Will and Tom, whether you could just add a little bit of clarity for us? At present, where does that sit on our work, forward work programme? And is this something that perhaps we have to take out of the meeting and discuss at a, at a later date? Apologies. Yes, thank you Will. Thank you Tom. Councillor Auckland, do you mind if we just let Tom clarify this point?
Sorry, could you repeat the start of it Chair? In terms of the, the ask from committee specifically?
So I think the ask is where, so with regards to the prioritisation of 20 mile an hour zones across the city, we have a rolling programme. And I think the, the clarification was where does forward and high green sit on that?
Yeah, we can, we can provide you with the relative list of, kind of the order of the rollout of 20 mile per hour zones. But the, the consultation is being undertaken at the moment. I think it's February that we, which is the committee after this one, that would be expecting those reports to come back. Subject to any kind of unforeseen issues. But yeah, our plan is to bring that consultation results back to the committee and to set out a recommendation to committee in February.
Thank you. Thank you Tom. I, I think the point as well that was made by councillor Sangha that it's not necessarily reflected in our work programme. So we'll have to make sure that that is in our work programme and that that report back from the committee is there as well. So thank you for spotting that mistake councillor Sangha. Thank you for adding clarification Tom. Councillor Sangha.
Thank you for that and say, and thank you to councillor Gamble-Pew for, for the support. I'm, I'm just very aware that, that the forward scheme in particular, that petition did, has been part of a lot of communication to officers. So making sure it happens in February, making sure the report comes to the committee in February would be, would be very welcome. So thank, thank you for that.
Thank you. I think we would seek to bring that in February if officer time was permitting. Is, is that possible for us to do Tom?
That's certainly what I'll take away from today. I'll just flag that as you mentioned Chair in your response to the question, that if having started the consultation, there are other streets that we want to include in the, the scheme, there will be a requirement for us to consult people that are newly affected and hadn't expected to be in the zone before. So again Chair, just, just our, our plan at the moment is to bring to February the provider we can get all of that completed in, in time.
Thank you. Councillor Auckland.
Chair, I'm just hoping to slip in a question about something that could might be on the list. A61 corridor study. I didn't see there, so I just wonder when it might be coming, coming along into the work programme. And by the way, I can't, maybe Tom, you could answer. Because you've put some 20 mile an hour zones in and it comes up regularly about parts of the distributor network. And why aren't they included? And the answer is from the policy and from the guidance. Do you happen to know, has it changed? I mean, so anticipating what you come back with in March, is it likely that policy could be changed? That, oh, there's going to be, it's not legal, it's not guidance. Do you know?
Tom, I guess I'm mindful that we do need to make progress in the work programme. I'll, I'll just give Tom a very brief opportunity to respond.
We'll make sure that the timescales associated with the A61 scheme are included in the work plan. It won't be before the end of this municipal year that a report comes to, to committee. In terms of the wider policy position around 20 mile per hour, I, I don't think I can go into that now. There have been changes, both national legislation in Wales, obviously, and other things. But in terms of the, the kind of review of the council's policy in light of wider national position, then we can bring that back to March.
Thank you. Councillor Shaw. Thank you. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. It's a suggestion for an additional item on the work programme, maybe for whoever's on this committee next year, is to get an update on the East Bank Road ATF4 scheme, I believe. I mean, we have the sheet value scheme. I bring this up regularly. That was well behind schedule. So I think we don't want the East Bank Road to have similar issues. So I think it's important to have some kind of oversight of that at some point over the coming year.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. I know that's something in my ward as well about the East Bank Road ATF scheme. I think we can seek to add that to the work programme if members would agree. I can see some nodding, absolutely. Councillor Merzouga?
Thank you. I'd also like to add something to the work plan, please, and that's the feasibility of a last mile e-cargo bike delivery hub in the city centre. I think this would really reduce our transport emissions, which is what we need to do. We're discussing this later. It will also improve air quality, reduce noise, reduce street obstruction and the need for so many delivery bays, et cetera. I do believe this has been started to be discussed in some of the knowledge briefings, but I'd like it to be added as a point to have a feasibility study for this, please.
Thank you, councillor Merzouga. I'm just having a discussion at the side just now about how we put all these items in and how we phase them in terms of the meetings. Obviously, it is a good thing that we can add more things to the work programme and the item you mentioned, my e-cargo bikes is a really good one, as is councillor Richard Shaw's item as well. I think if the committee would agree, we'll put them into the work programme. But I think that has to be subject to a discussion about which meetings that those can come to, which would be at our knowledge briefings as well. So there'd be representation from all political groupings. So I think it is a good thing and I've seen nodding from other members that actually we do add that to the work programme, but it's just a question of where we put these in our meetings. I can see agreement. Thank you very much. So if we can add that item, that would be brilliant. And councillor Gamble-Pew?
Yeah, thank you. I raised the point about the route maps, of which we are supposed to have seven. We got two through the June or July committee and we've got one due to be as on the work plan for March, which leaves four still outstanding. So I raised that issue when I spoke before. Had a bit of a rant. It's nice to have a little rant, but that doesn't get us any further forward. So I was actually raising it not just to have a rant, but also to ask whether we could actually get some of that brought forward on to the work programme for this municipal year. At the very minimum, what I would expect us to be doing this municipal year is to get an update on what the timescale is for the production of those route maps and some reassurances about whether it's feasible for a route map for one of those four outstanding areas, if it's introduced in, say, 2025 or 2026. Does that still give scope for the authority to maintain its targets in the remaining years that are available? Because if the answer to that is no, then this method of working ceases to be fit for purpose and we need to be taking some decisions early on that. So we need some guidance from officers on what we can have this municipal year to further the culmination of those seven route maps. And it needs to be built into the work plan.
Thank you, councillor Gamble-Pew. I think I'm mindful that we are discussing this item as item nine later, so there will be further opportunities to make that case. I think it's also probably important to stress that whilst this is a good opportunity for people to add items to the work programme and to discuss it in this context, actually there are also opportunities outside this meeting. Because sometimes we do have to make decisions about where we prioritise, reports that come forwards based upon officer time and political priorities that we all have in this room as well. So hopefully we'll be able to bring that item up later. Councillor Sanga?
Yeah, I have a lot of sympathy with what councillor Gamble-Pew said, but we'll cover it in item nine. Just in terms of page 28, can we make a decision? Can we say that the Crooks Valley Road and the Barnsley Road schemes can come to the March meeting? And that the Ecosall Road Safety Project, we push back into the next municipal year? Can we take that decision now, just so that we do it? Just so that at least we get these two local schemes on the programme for March? Is that possible or is that pushing highways officers too much?
Tom, could you add clarification? I'm mindful that in making decisions here, I don't want to necessarily to make spur of the moment decisions that might then have other impacts for funding or the operational aspects of schemes.
I think, Chair, in fairness, that's what we'll need to do. So I'm more than happy to take away kind of the suggestions on that, but we will need to confirm what the potential implications of that are. In particular, the A625 Ecosall Road Safety Scheme does need to be implemented by the end of next municipal year. And therefore, we'll need to make sure that decisions on that don't affect that delivery timescale. Because there's various stages of development and decision making that will be required. But we'll certainly take that away.
Thank you very much, Tom. Do I see any other contributions from members about the work programme? I don't. So subject to the discussions that we've had about the additional items that we want to put on the work programme, do I see that all members are in agreement that we can move forward and agree to that work programme? Agreed. Superb. Thank you. That therefore takes us on to item number eight, which is our 2023 to 24 Quarter Two Budget Monitoring Report. And our presenting officer will be Jane Wilby. Jane, thank you so much for bringing this today.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Jane Wilby, Head of Accounting. So the paper that you've got gives an update of the Quarter Two Budget Monitoring Information for 2324. Each committee will receive this update paper in December. The last committee's update was in September on the Quarter One Outturn Position. So at Quarter Two, the council's forecasting an overspend in the general fund of 17.4 million against a net revenue budget of 487 million, which is a variance of 3.6% to budget. At Quarter One, we forecasted an overspend of 17.6, so not a big movement between quarters. But we'd seen a big adverse movement of 2 million in the Education, Children's and Families Committee. We'd recognised that income forecasts from health for integrated commissioning activities would not be achieved within this financial year. This 2 million was offset through our capital financing budget. Economic conditions have continued to yield strong interest rates on our investments and slippage in the capital programme has delayed our need for borrowing and strengthened our overall cash position. And interest returns have been above budget again this year. The three main areas for overspend for the council are in adults, children's and homelessness. In adults, we've seen a big investment in bringing down the average cost of care packages following the spike that we saw in the pandemic. But the service continues to be challenged by increasing demand and an inflating cost base. In children's, we've got big challenges from the rising cost of placements caused by a limited supply in the city alongside a shortage of foster carers to support that demand. We've also a rising cost of home to school transport. In homelessness, the situations arisen post lockdown, coupled with the shortage of affordable housing in the city and a limited range of options. Our use of hotel and bed and breakfast accommodation has reached an unsustainable and unaffordable level. The homelessness is a national issue and there are now more than 100,000 households in temporary accommodation, which is the highest level for 20 years. In spite of these emerging challenges, the £47 million worth of budget savings plans that were put in place as part of the 2324 budget, however, are currently 80% on track to deliver, with a further 12% that will be delivered in 2425. The Transport, Regen and Climate Committee is forecast to balance against its net budget of 43.1 million. There is an income shortfall in planning services as activity is below budget, but this is offset by income levels in the highways network management, which is above budget, bringing in the committee to an overall balance. The national context is that issues in Sheffield are not unique and councils across the country are experiencing the same challenges and the same financial context. We've seen four local authorities in the past 12 months declare insolvency issuing 114 notices, Nottingham being the most recent name to the list, austerity being the underlying cause of this financial distress. Sheffield City Council has been able to manage overspends by drawing from reserves from the past two financial years and will do so again this year if no further in-year mitigations are brought forward. We set aside 70 million of our reserves in 21 for budget contingency and will have 13 million left by the end of the year. Reserves can only be used once and are depleting as overspends continue. The Autumn Statement offered no reassurance that government will be any additional funding for local authorities. The medium term financial analysis, which will be presented to Strategy and Resources Committee later on this month, it also highlighted a 61 million budget gap over the next four years, with 18 million falling in 2425. Services have been developing solutions to bridge the budget gap for this for next year and they bring forward to recent policy committee meetings. All policy committees will make their final decisions in November. Consultation on the existing proposals and overall budget will need to take place. Further balancing options will need to be developed and the impact of the local government financial settlement will be assessed and reported. On the 21st of December, Strategy and Resources will be asked to make a recommendation on the savings to date to full council. On February, the Strategy and Resources Committee will be asked to recommend that full budget to council. In summary, then, the council must continue to drive delivery of budgets, savings plans and tackle in-years overspends to prevent those budget gaps from widening. The committee is asked to note the council's financial position for Quarter Two at 2324. The Quarter Three position will be presented to the committee in March. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane, for taking us through that report. Do I see any member wishing to ask a question or make a contribution? Councillor Fox?
Thank you, Chair. Just looking at the Transport, Regen budget, we've got vacancies. Is that in the planning? Is that why we've got the overspend in the planning? That we so we haven't got the vacancies to cover the planning applications that are coming in?
I think whilst there are vacancies in the committee budgets in general, there are not a lot of them that are in the planning team. I'm sure Will might want to clarify that. I think it's more about the activity levels in terms of the applications. So the income levels are not quite hitting target. So we're short on income in the budgets rather than the fact that we've not got the people to process the applications. It's more that, really.
Will, are you able to add a little bit more clarity to that as well?
Yeah, happy to do that. Councillor Fox, Jane's right on that. We are currently seeing over the last couple of months, two or three months actually, lower than forecast income targets on mainly around planning application fees. And that's a result of a number of things. We're seeing that as a general theme across the development industry. So developers, investors who want to bring forward schemes are actually holding off a little bit due to rising inflation, higher interest rates around property, some of the instability in materials markets caused by the war in Ukraine and other things. So what we hope is that those income targets will pick up towards the back end of this year, municipal year. And in fact, we are reporting over this month a return to normal really on planning application fee levels. We're also expecting that as the local plan progresses through its adoption process, that will give a degree of certainty that we haven't had for a long time to the development industry and the housing industry. And actually, we might see those application levels recover. But yeah, it's primarily due to a lack of applications based on kind of events really outside of the council's control. We are carrying some vacancy in the planning service, but not to the extent where it's materially impacting our ability to process the applications that we have.
Thank you. That's a bit clearer. Thanks.
Thank you for the question, councillor Fox, and the clarification there. Do I see any other member wishing to ask a question or point of clarification? I don't. So that therefore takes us to the recommendation of the report, which is on page 33. And we're being asked to note the updated information management actions on the 202324 revenue budget out and as described in this report and as presented by Jane today. Do I see that we are all agreed? I can see nods from the room and no dissent. So thank you. That has therefore been carried and passed. Thank you very much, Jane, for running us through that item. It's very much appreciated. We are going to take item nine and after item nine, we'll take a short five-minute comfort break. But item nine is our annual climate progress report from 202223. And Mark Whitworth is going to be running us through this.
Chair, can I just make a suggestion?
Of course, councillor Fox.
Because we've got some people here that are asking questions about Moscar Cross Road. Would it be feasible to bring this item up before the break? And take the annual climate report after the break?
It could be. Let me just see whether that's something that the committee would agree and support. Thank you very much for making that very useful and kind suggestion. Mark, I'm really sorry. I think we're going to take the other item beforehand. So apologies for being a little bit premature inviting you up for that one. Tom, we are therefore going to be moving, as councillor Fox said, to an item that was meant to be later on our agenda. It's actually item 11 on your agenda and it's the Moscar Cross Road prohibition of driving item. It's on pages 101 to 124 of the Agenda Pack. And Tom Finnegan-Smith is going to run us through it. Tom, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, thank you. So the report presents an issue around Moscar Cross Road. Moscar Cross Road is a byway open to all traffic. And that means that it's a highway over which the public have a right of way for vehicular and other kinds of traffic. But its use is mainly for the purpose for which footpaths and bridleways are so used. Most of those highways cluster as boats, do not have a surface suitable for general traffic and their use in certain weather conditions, as you heard earlier, can cause safety issues and result in significant damage to surface material. The area where it's proposed to introduce a restriction through a traffic regulation order is where there is regular damage during winter months. And consequently, in recent years, we have had to introduce a temporary traffic order to prohibit some motor vehicles. The section under which the restrictions are proposed are indicated in Appendix A and the prohibition would restrict driving of motor vehicles except for solo motorcycles along the road during the period of 1st of October to the 31st of May. The restrictions would be implemented using the installation of appropriate regulatory signs, but also a lockable gate and a bridle gate. Those that require access to adjacent land, such as the adjacent farmland, will be exempt from the restriction and provided with an access key for the gates that would be introduced. We've had a history of having a number of complaints around the condition of the byway from local residents, but also from users of the route. The cost of the maintenance that we've had to undertake following each winter where damage has occurred is set out in section 4.2, but it isn't sustainable given our current budget position. On some occasions, when the route is in a particularly poor state, it's had to be closed by us to all users in the interest of safety. And that's been done through a temporary traffic regulation order. And obviously, there's costs associated with doing that when we have to. And again, those are set out in the report. Section three covers the consultation we've undertaken and the responses. So we promoted a traffic regulation order for the restriction, which was advertised at the end of August. We sent out letters and emails to local We sent out letters to, and emails to local ward members, parish council, statutory consultees, and there were notices in the press and on-site. The responses that we've received are summarized in section 3.3, but were also covered in detail in appendix B. We've had 16 responses to the consultation. Some of those, seven of those are formal objections and nine support the proposal. All seven objectors indicated that they support the aims of the proposal and acknowledged the, the damage that does occur on the route, but objected because it doesn't go, doesn't include motorcycles. There were nine supportive comments and two of those specifically indicated they supported the exemption of solo motorcycles. Again, those are all covered in full in appendix B. In considering the restrictions to be introduced, we believe that prohibiting solo motorcycles would, it would attract more objections, but it wouldn't necessarily contribute towards the aims of the maintenance of the route. At present, there is no significant evidence to justify including the prohibition of solo motorcycles. But if the decision to make the order is made, the situation will be monitored and reviewed after a year and we'll be able to then determine whether, in line with our, our view at the moment, it's achieved its aims and it has prevented damage. The majority of the significant damage, and we do have a couple of images, I think, that we're able to share, we believe is made by heavier vehicles, four-by-four vehicles that are using the route predominantly on that, on a recreational basis. If, if we introduce the scheme as proposed and there may be a need for a change, then we wouldn't be able to do that through the promotion of a further order. But today's decision, committee would not be able to take a decision today to include solo motorcycles in the TRO restrictions to be introduced because we have not advertised that restriction. So if the decision today is to not support the recommendation in the report, we would have to then promote that traffic regulation order. If the decision is to support this restriction, with the exception of solo motorcycles, solo motorcycles, we would then, as it's contained within the report, review that and if required, undertake further action to, to further the maintenance of that route. The images are on the screen now. That shows an image of damage that has occurred. That damage, sorry, that damage, that image was undertaken, it was in December 20, sorry, January 2022. And the second image is from this summer. So you can see there that, that, that's right, after repair, that is the condition in the dry summer months. But you can see the condition in the winter is, is terrible and the, you know, a requirement there to kind of restrict the heavier vehicles is, is our recommendation. So what we are recommending today, Chair, is that having considered the representations that we've, we've received through the consultation and determined that the reasons to support the proposals outweigh any unw withdrawn objections, we recommend that the traffic regulation order is made and that the prohibition of driving except for solo motorcycles on this route is introduced and that the gates associated with the, the restrictions are introduced along with the signage required and that we would obviously inform the objectors of that decision if that is the one they make. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Tom, and thanks so much for the pictures that were very helpful as well. I'd propose to take this in two parts. Firstly, an opportunity to ask questions of Tom and then to debate the item if needed. I can see two colleagues, three colleagues or four colleagues who are indicating to speak. Councillor Campbell Pugh first.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to ask what was the rationale for excluding, for not exclude, for excluding the exclusion of motorbikes from the TRO? Because I, I can't see, I mean, if somebody said, we're going to ban vehicles from driving across your lawn, but we're going to let motorbikes carry on, I wouldn't have much truck with the argument that motorbikes wouldn't do very much damage. So I just wondered what's the, what's the rationale?
Okay, so officers involved in the scheme have, have looked at this issue and considered it carefully. In doing that, we have to balance up that issue around that, at the moment, this route, this byway has, people have a legal right to use it. And removing that right, we've had to consider the evidence that we've, we've had in front of us and the, the scale of the damage and then the impact of removing those access rights. Officers have, have looked at information and have visited site on a number of occasions. They consider that the, the majority and the most significant damage is being made by four-by-four vehicle users and that in removing their access, that the condition of the byway will be far better than it, it currently is and as you can see on the screen at the moment. The, the issue there is that in allowing motorcycles to use the route, we don't think that the, the scale of the damage will be anywhere near as significant and it would not impact on the access of other users.
Thank you, Tom. Councillor Mizerow? Sorry, councillor Gilligan-Cuboe?
This one, sorry. I, I just wanted to clarify the process again, to make sure I understood you correctly. If we decide that we want to ban motorcycles as well, then nothing will happen today. Is that what you're saying? We can't, we would, if we don't allow it to go through today because there's no motorcycles on, how long do we have to wait to get motorcycles on there?
So if committee's decision today is not to support the recommendation in the report, but to ask officers to go away and promote a restriction that includes both motorized vehicles, so four-wheel vehicles plus solo motorcycles, then we would have to promote a further traffic regulation order. The, the traffic regulation order that we have consulted on does not cover motorcyclists. So committee's decision today cannot be to just introduce a restriction that does involve excluding motorcyclists. We'd have to promote a new TRO, we would then have to consider any objections that came from that, most likely report them through to committee and committee would need to consider those in making its decision on the outcome and whether that would or would not include a restriction that included motorcycles. So that process, as I'm sure you're aware, in your experience as members around traffic regulation orders, does take some time. We're currently going through a process of upgrading to a map-based system of making traffic regulate, raise, get my teeth in, traffic regulation orders in the city. So it will only be within kind of the, probably the, the spring that we're able to start that. There'd certainly be a delay, even if we were to start in, in January. We may be actually, apologies, this is a moving traffic restriction, so we may be able to advertise this sooner. And we would have that statutory period for consideration of any objections and bring a report back to you. But I expect that that would be in the new municipal year.
So if we, sorry, if we pass this one, it will start immediately, will it?
So if, if the recommendation today is to approve this report, then officers are preparing to implement the scheme associated with it. As you, again, we are well into winter now. We would not want it to get to the stage where it's, we introduce a temporary TRO because in the, in the years that we've had to do that, that prohibits all users from using the route. We have some external funding to, to provide the gates and the changes to the gates are in place at the moment and we would look to implement that as soon as possible.
Thank you, Tom, for the answers to that question. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Tom, for, for the report and your answer so far. I mean, my experience of dealing with or trying to deal with like off-road motorcycles in, in my world where they've caused antisocial behaviour is that any, any measures that's actually effective against them actually stops pretty much everyone using them because by their nature, off-road motorcycles are pretty lightweight and can get round basically anything you put in place. So I mean, on the proposed scheme costs, it says, well, basically six, £6,000. If we decided we wanted to put in measures that would prevent off-road motorcycles along, along this route as well, do you have any kind of idea of how much that might, might cost in future or instead?
I don't at the moment. That isn't something that we've included in the report as an alternative option. We would clearly need to make some further amendments to what's proposed. There are solutions to, to that issue, but as you've highlighted, that balance between trying to retain access for people on horse, horseback, people on bikes, it is, it is challenging to get an engineering solution that, that prohibits somebody on an off-road bike, but allows those other users through. I think in terms of the, the kind of position we're in, as the recommendation is, we would be able to see how significant any issues are if we were to implement this scheme in front of you and take some considered measures in terms of amendments to the gates for next year, should it be required that we introduced a restriction for motorcyclists. But for some of the, the bridleway gates, it is still very hard to absolutely prevent people using this type of route because of the, the access requirements and the size of horses that go through.
Thank you very much. And councillor Sanga?
Yes, Chair, I mean, I just want to follow up the answers to councillor Campbell Pugh and councillor Gilligan-Cuboe's question. I mean, I'm a little concerned of how we got here because many of the objections, the objections about motorcycle use are from our partner organisations. And I thought on page 31, we'd agreed a toolkit and surely the public engagement toolkit should mean that we should know what sort of comments we're going to get. And if there are a number of our partner organisations who wanted a, a more restrictive TRO, could we not have foreseen that before we got to this stage?
Thank you. In, in terms of the, the engagement toolkit, that isn't yet, yet signed off and wasn't available when this engagement was undertaken. The, nevertheless, there has been early engagement on this. As was mentioned earlier, there have been meetings on-site from different user groups, but not all user groups, as I'm sure you appreciate, will, you know, consider, you know, the, see things the same way. And again, I'll go back to the point, which is, you know, legally, all users have a right to use this byway at the moment. So in removing those access rights, we need to be really clear that there is a strong evidence for us to defend that position. And the officers that have been involved in this have looked at it carefully and do not consider that there is a, a case for that at this time.
And thank you. And I, I think it was a really useful contribution from councillor Sanga about the public engagement toolkit. I think, you know, Tom Finnegan Smith rightly talks about another consultation approach that we are bringing together about how we bring forward transport schemes that hasn't necessarily been signed off. Councillor Sanga was referencing the engagement toolkit that was agreed by full council in March 2022, which kind of outlines a number of different approaches that we can take when bringing forward items. Councillor Auckland, I think you would like to ask a question?
So it was the case that I would think we're advertising an order. You advertise for the most you think you could possibly need for the reasons you've outlined. It's easier to step back and modify what you've put in the, the order than it is to, well, effectively start again if we wanted to include motorcycles. I think that's my understanding of the answers. From a standing start, I started off thinking, well, I'd be in favour of including motorcycles in the order. I'm entirely sympathetic to the case made because actually, when I see this as a problem walking about the Peak District, I tend to see not one motorcycle churning up the ground, but several seem to hunt in, in packs. But I'm just persuaded by the explanation that, that Tom's given us, that it's, we've got this on the table now and it's a bit of a start again if we want to look at it. So look at it again and modify it. I would be in favour of looking at it in, in the light of the evidence once we, once we've put the, the changes in if they're agreed. But from what you're saying, and in answer to, to councillor Sanga's question, I'm assuming officers are, are pretty confident that the balance lies in the order in front of us. Otherwise, you'd have put in the, the issue about motorcycles and we'd have had representation about motorcycles probably, Chair, and we'd have to then to decide whether to listen to that or not. We could have taken it out as a committee or left it in if people find a reasoning. So you must be absolutely certain, this is, as you can be, that this is the right course at this stage to get to where we need to get to in preventing damage, I guess.
Yeah, thank you for your question. It, it is, it is the recommendation that we're putting forward to committee and we do feel that this will have a significant benefit. In, in terms of that approach of almost choosing to promote a more onerous restriction and advertise that and, and come back from it, then, then yes, that is a, a, a process that can be done within a traffic regulation order. But you still need to be sure around the, the, the case that you're making to remove those more onerous rights of, of access in this case or introducing restrictions on, on the street in, in another way. So given that officers had looked at this, they didn't consider that there was the, the evidence to support that position and going out with a more onerous order with the potentially kind of backdrop of actually kind of not including motorcyclists, should there be significant objections or for any other reason? If we're going out with a restriction, we really should be promoting the one that, that we want to implement, not, not an alternative that we might fall back away from.
And I think the position that you've outlined, Tom, is that if the committee was minded to support this, then there would be a viewpoint potentially within, within 12 months with the collection of data.
That's right. And again, more than happy to commit to doing site visits with committee, with, with groups to have those further discussions at a relevant review point. You know, the, the points around engagement, I was referring to the, the transport engagement toolkit, too many engagement toolkits, but maybe you can never have enough. So more than happy that that commitment is, is recorded in the minutes.
Thank you, councillor Auckland.
On the basis of the explanation, Chair, I'll be, as it were, happy to support the recommendation. The, the, the cutting back explanation is an explanation I've given to countless constituents over the years. I'm sure we all have, oh, well, we can always change it. Otherwise, we have to go through it all again, which is where we are now.
Thank you, councillor Auckland. Councillor Mizerow and then councillor Sanga.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd welcome a review, as you say. It's clear in the second photo taken in the summer that there is damage from tyres. So it's, it's not completely undamaged even in the summer. And I'd also like to make the point that we as a council declared a nature emergency in 2021. I think that- I think that banning all motorised vehicles except for access would contribute to the fulfilment of the statutory purpose of the national park to conserve and enhance its natural beauty, wildlife and cultural heritage, as well as allowing people to quietly enjoy the countryside. It is exceptional because it is grassy and there's no underlying gravel and it makes it very vulnerable to motor vehicles.
Thank you councillor Merzaro. I'll go back to, I think it was councillor Sanga, and then councillor Fox, and then come back to Tom for a response, if that's okay. Councillor Sanga.
Yeah, yes Chair, sorry, shall we go on comments? So I mean, I fully accept that I sometimes see things as a walker rather than as other road users. I have a real problem with a lot of the boats in, the boats we have in and around the Peak District. They're clearly not suitable for modern motorised vehicles. They're old packhorse routes that, you know, happy for people to take their packhorses and happy for equestrian use, you know, much rather they all moved to a more restricted, more restricted use. I say I'm in awe of people who run and people who use mountain bikes, but I just think we need to find other places for four-by-fours and quad bikes and trirol bikes. And, you know, I hear what my colleagues have said and clearly we've got a recommendation in front of us and we've got to go and report what we've advertised in terms of the TRO. But I just think we're in a poor place and I think we need to find a way of coming of having additional recommendation that says we come back in 12 months' time and sees what the evidence is once we put this current TRO into to ban motor vehicles except solo motorcycles. I think many of us feel that, you know, that these sorts of byways for all traffics, you know, it's a throwback. It's not what we need in terms of the modern outdoor city and the Peak District that we want to enjoy. So I would much rather go with what we've got here with the additional recommendation that we come back in 12 months and see if we've got the evidence in terms of motorbikes. You know, I'm aware of other places where we have put the barriers in, we have put the horse hops in, we have put the barriers in. And we have, you know, we've both been able to reduce the four-by-four use and the quad bike use and also make some attempt at stopping trials motorbikes. Although I accept the point from those more knowledgeable people around the table just how hard it is if a trirol bike wants to go somewhere. I think the other point I would make is we do need places for people to ride their trirol motorbikes. It's perfectly legal activity. We just need to find somewhere to put it that doesn't do the damage. I've got a real concern with somewhat more of the off-road four-by-four motor vehicles. It just churns up lots of these unbuilt roads and we just end up spending a lot of money for a few people and I don't think that's proportionate. But I support the recommendations here with the, but I say I would like an addition that we come back in 12 months and see if we can get evidence that solo motorbikes are causing a problem on this particular road. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Sanga. And I think you suggested a really useful addition to the recommendation. We'll come back to that when we do take a view collectively on it, but we must remember that one. Councillor Fox.
Thank you Chair. I did put my hand up at the beginning. I think you must have missed me because I wanted to get a... So I don't know this area. So I wanted to know why, why four-by-fours go up there, all motorcycles? It looks like a lovely country road to me and why do people feel that they need to take a car up there? I just would like to have understood that at the beginning. That's one question. But the other question is, going back to the signs, did we not, like the question has asked, consider putting signage up first before we were about to spend money on gates etcetera? Thank you.
Thank you. If it's okay Chair, I'll take them in that order if that's all right. Councillor Fox, so yeah, for us to put up signs, we'd still need that traffic regulation order and the decision on which vehicles are included and which aren't. And I think it's our experience across the city in many different ways that if a restriction is introduced without a physical engineering solution as well, then it is far less likely to be adhered to than if we can put in measures that prevent access. So in this respect, the gate would be locked to motor vehicles. Those nearby kind of people that require access to the land would have a key, but you would not be able to drive your four-by-four through. And in terms of why people do it, it's our understanding that it is mainly a leisure activity in terms of the use of these routes. People like to off-road and that's their choice in terms of, they will know where there are these boats, these byways where they can undertake this activity and they will do it for a leisure purpose. In terms of the review approach, we're more than happy to, as I mentioned earlier, include that kind of 12-month review, looking at evidence. We do visit and take photos so we can collate that log of records and evidence for further discussion.
Thank you, Tom. And I think we had a final contribution from councillor Shaw.
Is, are we definitely on the final comments section?
Apologies, that's my fault for not giving clarity, but I think so councillor Shaw. But I will give others an opportunity if they want to speak.
Thank you Chair. And thank you again for the report and the answers to questions. I'm very much kind of minded to support the order that we have in front of us and I would support a review in, you know, in 12 months' times or so once we have more, you know, kind of hard evidence about the effect of the damage or prevention of damage that this order might make. You know, I generally prefer kind of incremental approaches and as has been pointed out, you know, people do have legal rights to use this byway. And, you know, if the officers believe they don't have the evidence to do that, then usually it seems the opposite. It's like we're usually much more sceptical. But I would certainly support the proposed order and, you know, we review it in, you know, in 12 months and see if it is necessary essentially to introduce more restrictions at that time.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Do I see any other colleague wishing to make a contribution? I don't. I think I haven't made a contribution about this and I think it's probably important just to reflect for a second on the really interesting question that I think councillor Fox posed about why is it that people with four-by-fours want to drive down unpaved country lanes? In my mind, I think it's selfish. I think it's dangerous. I think it shows complete utter disregard to people who are trying to enjoy the countryside. And that's why it's right that I think that we are taking steps to deal with that. I think what we are faced with today is finding a pragmatic solution to this problem. I think we've seen a number of excellent contributions, particularly ones about our duty with regards to declaring a nature emergency and our need to conserve the countryside. I think we did have a contribution, didn't we, from councillor Sanga about adding an additional recommendation which would be to seek a review within 12 months of this to be then brought back before this committee. I'll just ask councillor, sorry, I'll just ask Tom Finnegan Smith whether that's something that could be added to the report and then we'll see whether the committee is in favour of it. Tom, could that potentially be added to the report?
Yes Chair, I think we'd be happy for that to be added to the report and the recommendation.
Do I see agreement from the committee that we can add that 12-month review point? I'm seeing nods and no dissents as well. So when we actually do vote or move forward on this item, we would be moving forward with that additional recommendation of a 12-month review point as well. And that will be on the basis of being able to gather more information to see whether the intervention, whether the measures have worked and whether further intervention was needed. And I think it's been really good, hasn't it, to hear from the Peak District Green Lanes Alliance and the fans of the Peak District today at our meeting. And it does show, doesn't it, how useful it is to have citizens come to our meetings and provide information to give us more clarity on items. So that therefore takes us to the decision point on this item. Are we happy to agree this report and its recommendations with the additional recommendation to have a review point after 12 months? I can see nods and I can see no dissent. So therefore that means that this item has been carried. Thank you very much, Tom, for presenting it and for members of the public for coming today to talk to us about this issue. We'd love to continue to meet and speak to you in the future. Thank you. I think we will take a five-minute brief comfort break and then we will ring the bell for people to come back as well. If people could be prompt, that would be really appreciated. Thank you. The meeting and we get back to our agenda where we're on item nine, which is our annual climate progress report for 2022-2023. It's on pages 45 to 97 of the agenda pack and Mark Whitworth is here to run us through it. Mark, thank you for the work that you and your team are doing on this.
Thank you Chair. So today we're asking the committee to consider our first annual climate report. This report has been produced in the spirit of transparency so that we can be open and honest within the organisation and with partners and members of the public about the scale of the challenge that we face in tackling climate change. This includes in the report the distance that we have to go in order to meet our 2030 net zero target, as well as being an opportunity to celebrate the good work that we're doing. We hope that this will stimulate greater action both within the council and also across the city, as well as illustrating to partners, including government and investors, the actions that we're taking. I'm going to start with some of the good work that's happening. There is a lot more that's detailed in the report, so I'm just going to choose a couple of items to summarise through. And we know that making progress is hard in this space and this is similar across lots of other local authorities. So some of the action that's been taking place over 2022 includes drawing in millions of pounds of funding to make it easier for residents to access grants and support help to improve the energy efficiency of their homes, particularly people on low incomes and with health conditions affected by the cold, which is particularly vital this time of year and with the ongoing cost of living crisis. We've allocated and managing over, well, almost four and a half million pounds of European and shared prosperity funded activity for businesses and community and cultural organisations to reduce emissions and to save money on energy. Developing transport improvements to make it safe for people to travel sustainably and healthily, including safe school streets for children. And we're also taking part in a government pilot which is to explore the potential for expanding the district heat network to provide affordable and low-carbon heat for homes and businesses and as well as securing funding through the private sector and the government for two techno-economic feasibility studies. The report is also clear that there's still a lot to do and that we need to increase the pace and the scale of the action. The report shows that the city's emissions are reduced by 12% between 2017 and 2021 and that the council's emissions are reduced by 3% between 2019 and 2022. Now, progress against targets is never going to be linear. There's obviously lots of other work that's happening in the background. There are some things that will be happening and the intention is that obviously over that period we start to see some leaps and jumps on progress. But the report is also very clear that progress isn't being made that is sufficient to enable us to achieve our goal. The council doesn't have the funds needed to make the progress on what we need to do and also the national policy environment is really difficult, as I think we all appreciate. However, we are making progress and we are working within existing resources to address this where we can. Some of the examples of this are we working with other core cities to explore these issues and work to develop solutions around some of these shared challenges, around things like funding and the policy environment, as well as working with other partners and the private sector, organisations such as the UK Infrastructure Bank to explore funding models. Now, I don't want to end this introduction on a low point. There are a lot of things that are good that are happening. And this is really valuable work that not only helps reduce our emissions but also helps save businesses and people money on their energy and can also help to make the city healthier and more prosperous. And the final point I want to make is that we are, just to remind the committee, that we are taking this report along with the set of committee climate statements to the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee on Wednesday to enable the chairs of those committees to consider the report and their collective roles in delivering the work towards our net zero targets. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark, for running us through that report. We're also mindful that it does, this report will be going, as you've mentioned, to Strategy and Resources after us as well. Do I see any member wishes to make a contribution? I can see a few. I'll take councillor Merzaro first.
Thank you. So I've got a few questions. Shall I ask them all at once or one at a time?
If you're happy to, I think that would be good. Thank you.
Okay, so I noticed on page 61 that the grey fleet is showing big increases in emissions. What measures are taken or could be taken to change this? On a related issue, can Sheffield council staff be offered subsidised public transport packages for their journeys to and from work? I previously asked at the beginning of the meeting for a city centre e-cargo delivery hub to be added to the work plan. What work has been done so far to look at the feasibility of a last mile e-cargo bike distribution system? And does Sheffield City Council have pool cars to reduce the need for staff to use their own car in the grey fleet? And on a kind of side issue, has anything been looked at to look at the address, sorry, look at the potential to move freight by canal to the city centre?
Thank you councillor Merzaro. Mark, are you able to help clarify any of those points? Appreciate that this is a whole council effort and you might not necessarily have all the answers today, but any clarity you can provide will be appreciated.
Thank you Chair, yeah, thank you councillor Merzaro. So I'll respond where I can, but as the Chair's pointed out, there may be certain things we need to go back for questions and I think Tom Finnegan Smith might be able to step in as well on some of the transport-related questions. But in terms of working on the grey fleet, we are working with colleagues in HR because obviously we have some of the HR policies around trying to encourage people to look at, for example, there's a leasing, electric vehicle leasing programme that's organised through an org company called Tusker, which again is looking at providing staff with a salary sacrifice programme if they're replacing their vehicles with a replacement vehicle which would be electric. So that's one of the options that's been explored on that. I think in regards to the pool cars, I'm not aware that we have any pool cars specifically on the general usage. But obviously services do have particular vehicles that they use in that sort of function. And I'm aware that the fleet management team are currently going through the programme of replacing a lot of our smaller vehicles with electric vehicles where possible and that's part of a longer-term programme. But I'll just defer to Tom if he's able to answer some of those other questions.
Thanks Mark. In terms of public transport and discounted travel, there is a scheme available to employees to obtain a discounted bus pass ticket. But that is just for sole operators at the moment. So it's either a first ticket or a staged coach ticket. The multi-operator travel master ticket isn't part of that. In terms of some of the car share aspects that were mentioned and grey fleet, so again, officers are able to use the city car club that is available. It's a relatively small footprint on the city, but we will be going out in the near future out to tender again for that provider to renew that contract. So there may be some further opportunities associated with that. E-cargo distribution, so we have previously been successful in securing funding from government to provide grants directly to local small businesses who are keen to operate e-cargo bikes and that was very well received. In terms of a kind of a distribution-type scheme, that is something that we'd need to look at further. to look at further, but I'm happy to take that away for further discussion and discussions in knowledge briefings as well with committee. And I'm not aware of any schemes that have looked recently around freight by canal. I know there are certain limitations almost beyond Rotherham in terms of the scale of freight that can be carried on the canal, but it is quite heavily used in parts of Rotherham where it is accessible.
Could I come back about the public transport pass and ask if it can be looked at that staff are given an enhanced offer when it comes to public transport usage?
Tom?
I can certainly take that away to colleagues at SYMCA and have those discussions and feedback to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Merzouro. I also have, I think, a contribution from councillor Gilligan Kubo.
My machine's not good today, is it? Is it working now? Thank you for the report. And, you know, it is good to see what we're doing and it's good to have a progress report. So thank you and for your staff, as obviously you've been putting a lot of work in to get this far. I mean, it is sad, is that the right word to say, that we have still got 68% to find in the next five years to reach our 2030 target, which is an enormous uphill battle. So we've got a lot of work to do and I do acknowledge that the current government is not helping us get where we want to go with their policies and things. So I have a couple of questions as well. One of the questions relates to page 69 and it's looking at our council and it's about the housing revenue account. So I appreciate you might not know the full details of this. It was just, there's a little, I'm not quite sure, there's quite a lot of numbers on here. We're going to upgrade 374 council homes, 354 homes will have external walls insulated and 120 properties will benefit from energy efficient measures. Are these all different properties? So that means there's a thousand being done or are they the same properties getting the same stuff? I just wasn't quite clear from reading that, so forgive me if I'm being stupid. But I also want to ask there, that's obviously a very small number of homes and what are we going to do about all the other thousands of homes that we need to get retrofit and especially for private homeowners? Are we able to highlight some accessible, affordable ways for the private homes in the city to retrofit and start saving energy? And the other area I wanted to ask about was, you do say urgently we need more renewable energy generation and I would just like to know a little bit more about what are your thoughts and how are we going to get there? Because it has been something we've talked about a lot, but we haven't quite got there. So I think they're the two main questions. Thank you.
Mark?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so on the first point around the housing figures, I think that there's a possibility that some of those aren't necessarily double counted, they may be the same property that has different measures included in them. So we'll take that back to housing colleagues because some of those, for example, external walls or they're looking at heating systems, so there may be some overlap. But obviously there are different programmes that have funded that and so there are different measures that have been delivered. But I think what we need to clarify is whether they are a larger number or whether it's sort of combined. But I think in the main, some of those are separate dwellings, so different programmes because they apply to different archetypes of housing, but we can clarify that for you. And I think in terms of what we can do, thinking about other homes and obviously that number is sort of dwarfs in comparison with the number of homes in the city. One of the other pieces of work that we're developing with housing colleagues is around the housing decarbonisation roadmap, which is being integrated within the housing strategy. So the housing strategy will effectively become the vehicle for delivering the outcomes of the decarbonisation roadmap. That is going to the housing committee in the summer. So that will include approaches around other tenures, so the different properties in the city outside of what has been delivered within our own housing stock. I think the other thing is that some of the funding that I mentioned in the introduction wasn't solely for council housing. Obviously the section in there relates to what was been secured for the HRA element of that and what we're doing with council homes. But there's also been work that's been undertaken in securing funding for owner occupiers, for some people, for vulnerable households. And again, sort of working with other partners to actually develop a service which enables people to be able to access grants more effectively and if enacted at a single point of contact so that rather than having to chase some of these things down as an individual, you can find that information much more quickly through the council, working with other partners.
Thank you. Councillor Gamble, Pugh.
Thanks, Chair. I'd like to thank Mark and all of the sustainability team for all that they do. I think we're really lucky to have the resource and the expertise that we do. What I think we perhaps need to do a little bit more of is listen to that expertise and act on it. And we'll maybe return to that a little bit when we get the political debate after the questions, but I do have some questions on the report. So I know in the covering report on page 47, there's a statement that says that action is needed at a scale not seen before. Are we clear what action it is that is needed and do we have any clear sense of how that will be scaled? Then secondly, I mentioned that we do have the sustainability team as a kind of core resource. Is that resource adequate currently to leverage the scale of change that we need across the whole of the local authority? And if not, do we need a radical rethink on the staff resource, the structure and where that's located within the organisation in order to bring every part of the council along with us at the pace we need? I'd also like to ask, in other service areas, we have a financial principle called invest to save, where we acknowledge that we need to spend money in order to make savings further down the line. Do we apply that at all to the climate emergency? Can we have some details of that? Then in terms of where we are, I think I preferred Christine's maths actually to mine on the progress and the timeframe. I think Christine said it was 68% of our target to go in five years. I've got down that we'd got three, we'd made 3% reduction. So I'd got something like another 33 years to go at that rate, which is a little bit late, 25 years late. Do we have a sense whether these reductions will now start to speed up as we progress? And do we have any sense of what that will, what that will look like? And finally, a question that I raised when we had the early discussion about the work plan for this committee, which was about the route maps. When will the remaining four route maps be produced and be in place? And will there be sufficient time for those to be enacted in between the point at which they're produced and agreed and the point at which we need to have achieved our net zero target 2030?
Prior to Mark answering those questions, I do just need to ask committee whether they are minded to extend the guillotine by half an hour. You can do that on two occasions for a period of up to an hour, but on this occasion I'm asking people for half an hour. I can see that people do. Mark?
Thank you, Chair. So yeah, so in terms of the questions that you've asked councillor Gamble, Pugh, so in terms of scaling up, obviously there is a significant amount of work that's taking place in terms of developing the work following the delivery of the first two route maps that came to the committee earlier this summer. Following on from that, there's now further work that's been developed. So for example, we've established the climate oversight board. We're now starting to see within the new council plan how climate is a priority and recognised within that plan and obviously something in order to be able to deliver at the scale that's required, we need to see this working across the organisation and being delivered across the organisation and something that's recognised as a priority. Not as you obviously reference a small team, but obviously how we're working across the organisation to deliver that. I think at the same time, we're starting to see some of the other elements, parts of the organisation recognising the importance of this and the opportunities. So for example, we talked about housing and with HRA and some of the other work that's going on and the housing service have established a small team that are helping develop some of the grants, some of the funding bids, some of the programmes there. And similarly with our colleagues within facilities management, where we're trying to bid for some of the public sector decarbonisation scheme funding, they're also looking again at bringing additional posts to actually help support that process. Because again, I think there's recognition that there isn't the resource that's required to be able to take that through. I think clearly then there has to be other thoughts around how some of the other financing and some of the other opportunities are to try and to deliver some of those programmes. Because in some instances, they do require the existence of match funding or they require funding to be available so that some of that work can be done at risk. So there does need to be some consideration given to that. So I think recognising that this is both something we need to do as a council and also as a city, it's going to require everybody to be involved in that process. I think, as we said, within some of the earlier work, within the earlier roadmap work and the work on the pathways to decarbonisation, that a lot of that wouldn't necessarily come from the council. The council doesn't have the funding to do that and isn't necessarily the right player to do that. However, there is obviously an opportunity or there's a need for the council to look at how it's delivering some of these activities itself. And there's an opportunity, for example, within our budget setting process, within the processes of looking at committee budgets, to decide whether there's an allocation that might be made or more funding put into delivering climate activities in the organisation. So that's clearly something that can take place. A long sort of hand in glove with some of the other work that's taken place around some of those conversations with organisations like the UK Infrastructure Bank and some of the external conversations that we're having about trying to bring in funding and finance for that. And I think also recognising that we do only have a small team at the moment. So the team, as you said, is, there's four officers and myself who are working on the climate and the sustainability agenda. But as we start to see that increasing across the organisation, there's clearly a significant more amount of work that needs to be done. So the opportunity there for other people to also start contributing towards that and being involved in delivering some of those opportunities is clearly part of the programme of actually how we as an organisation step up and start taking further action on this agenda.
Thank you very much, Mark. Councillor Sangha?
Thanks, Chair. Thank you to the officers for the report. I mean, it's really good that we've got information to monitor our progress. So two questions. I mean, the firstly, first one is just to understand the governance arrangements because clearly when we set up these committees, this committee had climate or climate change or climate challenge as part of its title. But when you look at the challenge, the challenge is clearly one facing the city or facing the country or the world, however you want to look at it. And I'm not surprised that housing have to lead on the housing element and it goes the housing first rather than to us. And clearly, same with Wasting Street, seeing that they're clearly going to be the lead committee in terms of waste. But I'm just unclear about whether we are the strategic leader, whether S and R are the strategic leader. I think this was the challenge when we set up the committee structure, that the big city challenges would all end up at Strategy and Resources and it would be a pseudo cabinet by another name. So I think that's the first question. I'm just concerned that this committee is losing its leadership on this. The second one is in terms of the graph on terms of page 59, just to understand sort of the challenge in front of us. We on this committee are very focused on the transport challenge and the sort of measures that we need to do on a transport front to hit the net zero target by 2030. But I'm less, I'm less clear on a personal note, what we have to do as a city in terms of the industrial and commercial and how many levers we have as a city council. And also I'm just interested in a sense of, clearly I understand where we are in terms of waste management, but if we had that graph nationally, agriculture would be much higher. And in a sense, some of the difficult choices in terms of agriculture, food production and food choices, we don't have to make as a city and we might make as individuals. So just understanding what that graph means in terms of what it's asking in terms of industrial and commercial and also to follow on questions from councillor Gilligan Kubo in terms of housing and clearly the domestic challenge in terms of how we heat our homes is a huge challenge and something I'll probably come back to in terms of comments. But I'm very aware that a housing strategy that just deals with 38,000 council properties doesn't address the other 220,000 properties. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sangha. And Mark? Or perhaps Tom?
Thank you, Chair. So on the question of leadership and the role of TRCPC, I don't know if I'm the best person to comment on that, to be honest, but I think, I think there's obviously the conversations that we're having taking the committee statements through to Strategy and Resources later this week, which is a way of trying to show how the committees work across each other, how this challenge is something that's shared across the organisation and how each committee has the opportunity within its work programme to contribute towards developing approaches to net zero, as I was saying earlier, and also future work and activity that they can be doing, but also showing how this needs to be dealt with across the organisation, that everybody needs to, has a role in actually in delivering that and reaffirming our commitment to net zero as an organisation, both sort of cross committee and cross political groups as well. I don't know if Will wants to come in on this point. Will?
Thanks, Chair. Happy to come in and I think it's a, I think it's a really important question. I think there are a number of things that are going on, but you know, I'd firstly like to say, I think when councillor Gamble, Pugh talked about a radical rethink in the way that we approach climate change, I think that is exactly what we need within this organisation. It's probably my role as director with climate change in my title to be very, very clear about that and I'm not going to apologise for that. I think it's something that we need to think differently as an organisation. What we're trying to do is use the levers that we have within governance structures and within things like our corporate documents to be able to articulate what exactly we do need to do to change and then distribute that responsibility across the organisation. Because I think what we've said here is that we've got a small expert climate change and sustainability team, but that is, you know, three or four people when we're an organisation of eight and a half thousand people and a city of 600,000 people. It's not adequate to be able to lead the response that we need as an organisation or as a city. We are doing great work, but ultimately this needs to be an approach that wraps in everybody and pulls a number of levers. Let me just say a little bit about what we're aiming to do on that. So firstly around structure, we've been very, very clear that the new corporate plan, which is in production at the moment, needs to lead on climate, you know, rather than being something that is built into each individual service area, it needs to be an overarching policy position that stretches across every committee. And the way that we are aiming to do that is for each committee, as Mark said, to adopt its own committee climate statements, articulating exactly how that committee will be responsible for action, but being ambitious about where it needs to go. So that's very, very clear. The city goals is another area that we've been leading on as an organisation and where we need that clarity as a city so we can wrap in basically voices of everyone in the city rather than just this organisation. Because as we know, probably this council control about eight to 10% of emissions in the city. Actually, it's going to be the heavy lifting of the city that we'll need to bring on board to allow us to move. The other thing that we've done is make sure that climate sits as a corporate risk on the council's corporate risk register and we're meeting tomorrow with the COO of this organisation to discuss how we get corporate risk around climate really accelerated in terms of priority in this organisation. And that should lead to, in my view, serious conversations about funding and about where that risk lies. So actually, when we're making priority based funding decisions, we need to be adapting to corporate risk and making sure that we're able to adapt, but also mitigate for climate. And then also, just to pick up on something councillor Gamble, Pugh was saying, the invest to save narrative, I think, is really a very, very important one. We know We know actually the right investment, particularly around our housing stock, for example, has a massive impact on quality of life, on fuel poverty, on actually improving people's access to opportunity and allowing people to be able to engage with life and live more comfortable lives. And that is a massive, massive contribution that impacts across the kind of social contribution agenda in terms of budgets. So there are things that we can do with relatively modest amounts of money that make big impact elsewhere. I think in just in terms of the, in terms of the route maps, I think what we've learned through delivering the first two route maps, our council and the way that we travel, is actually we need to embed climate action in those documents that have the most sway and where we find the biggest levers. So actually, the ambition to embed the decarbonisation roadmap for housing within the actual housing strategy, I think, gives us the biggest levers, not only to be able to impact on what we're doing through our own council housing stock, you know, 36,000 homes. But also there is work there that our housing colleagues are doing around decarbonisation in the private rented sector and also working with the development industry around lifting standards there. And in fact, our local plan, which is in for government at the moment, has a much more ambitious programme of policy around decarbonisation, which we want to hold on to. And in fact, there will be no applications moving forward after 2030 that do not promote a net zero agenda in this organisation. So I think that's a big improvement for us. We've got a long way to go, but they are some of the things where I think we need to change the pace of delivery and get serious as an organisation through our governance around how we address the climate emergency. I should just say just finally before I hand back to you, Chair, that we are recruiting to some additional positions to help Mark out. So you know, he's been carrying a vacancy in his team for a long time. We're out at the moment there. And we're also intending to bring in a new Assistant Director or Head of Service that's going to have direct responsibility for overseeing our climate challenge within the organisation. And that should add some much needed resource within that particular area. But just to stress, this needs to be a whole council approach.
Thank you, Will. And thank you for the work that you're doing and so passionately leading in our organisation. I think I saw councillor Shaw first, councillor Sanga coming back for that apology.
Can I thank Will for responding to the first, the grand part of my question. But the more granular bit in terms of, in terms of the industrial and commercial lead, just how, what levers have we got? And how do we drive that down? I'm just concerned. I'm sure we're going to come back to the housing point. A number of us have been following the housing debate for a long time. But just in terms of the commercial and the industrial and commercial challenge that we have. Because it seems to me that that's going to be of that graph, that's going to be the hardest bit for us to get close to by 2030.
Mark, are you able to respond to that?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. So you're right, there are, I mean, again, it's sort of who's best placed to undertake some of these programmes. But I think what we've, what we said previously is that as a council, we've got effectively sort of two roles. We've got the role around leadership and leading by example, demonstrating what we were doing with our own organisation. But also seeing whether there's opportunities for us to facilitate and to enable some of those other things to happen. Whether that's with, for example, with industry partners, looking at different programmes around, for example, looking at energy switching, so looking at the potential for over time to be looking at electrification, looking at some of those sort of opportunities to move away from the use of gas. And again, sort of some of the conversations we've had with partners about the limited application, the potential application of hydrogen, for example, in industrial processes. Again, that's not something where necessarily we'd be taking the lead. But there are other organisations in the city who are developing these approaches. And we have a very good opportunity there to help facilitate that and communicate that through some of our business networks, working with other partners, working with the universities, for example. And in some instances, actually holding the ring on some of the funding applications because government looks to the local government to be able to be the central pin in that conversation. I think the other thing that links into though also is a point that councillor Gilligan Kubo raised around what we're doing around renewables. And it links into sort of that energy switching and looking at alternatives, which is a piece of work which we're going to be undertaking next year, which will be looking at a local area energy plan. Again, a big part of that will be around how industry and the city receive their energy. Again, the need for grid upgrades and looking at the potential for bringing in other renewables and the opportunities that sort of then avail themselves around actually sort of some of the ways that we might need to heat and provide energy to homes, to businesses, to sort of commercial operators in the city. And then I think the final thing on that sort of piece, which isn't necessarily related to the directly on that sort of the CO2 emissions piece on there, on that chart. But it's more around some of those wider opportunities, around the sort of opportunities, again, working with our industry and commercial partners around the skills agenda, recognising that there's opportunities over the next few years around making sure that we've got the workforce, we've got the right skills in place, that the college and the universities have got the opportunities to train people to take advantage of some of those roles as they start to develop. And again, examples of that, working with Sheffield College to try and develop some of the programmes there around things like heat pumps and PV installation. So yes, I think that's kind of where we've got that sort of, that need to be involved in that conversation, if not necessarily directly investing and leading in that.
Thank you, Mark. And councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Mark, for the reports. Similar kind of question to councillor Sanga is that this is, the question I want to ask is maybe not confined to this committee. But it's about, we're talking about governance. And I think key part of that is about like accountability and, you know, assessing where we could have, where we can have done better. I mean, it's a great list of, you know, achievements and things that have happened over the past, you know, past couple of years in the report. But whereas, you know, what are the challenges? What have been the missed opportunities that, you know, or where things haven't, you know, we haven't, or where we haven't realised the carbon savings we, you know, we expected? You know, have we done something that's caused more CO2 emissions than we expected? You know, where are the key areas for improvement? And I think in, you know, in this report, you know, we need to be, you know, frank about those if they, you know, if they exist. So that, you know, we can, yeah, stay on track for 2030.
Thank you councillor Shaw. And I'll just take councillor Sanga. Sorry, councillor Auckland, and then perhaps come back to Mark. Councillor Auckland?
I just wanted to ask about the behavioural change wheel and the model of influencing actions people take and whether we've actually got a link through to Hallam University and whether we think this is a useful model for influencing the necessary changes that we wish to see.
Thank you. I think we've got two questions there, one from councillor Shaw and one from councillor Auckland. I think, Will, you were interested in answering the question specifically from councillor Shaw.
Yeah, thanks councillor Shaw. I think, you know, it's a really good point around, you know, where we could have done things slightly differently. But actually, I think looking at that slightly the other way, do we have the processes at the moment to be able to consider the impact of climate early enough in the decision-making process? And I think if I'm honest, I think that's varied across this organisation. So that one of the things that we are trying to do is make sure that we look at decision-making, procurement decisions, finance decisions, things that we do as an organisation that have a bearing on climate change much earlier in the process. So bringing that kind of analysis much earlier. The climate impact assessment is one way of doing that. But often, I think it's used quite retrospectively in terms of after the decision is made, what's been the impact. But what we're trying to do is get ahead of the game. So where we're making the decisions about contracts that we let, about procurements that we move forward with, about decisions that we take in committees. Actually, we are coming to the climate narrative earlier in that process. So actually, we are aware of the decisions that we're making. And actually, we're able to weigh up and be honest with ourselves about those decisions much earlier in the process. That's something that we're working on from an organisational level with the new Chief Operating Officer. We aim to build a protocol around that, which is in draft at the moment. And as I said, we're meeting with her tomorrow to talk about that. But that will be linked to risk as well. So what we are doing as an organisation to mitigate the risk for ourselves as an organisation, but also for the city's citizens as well. Because ultimately, as we've seen, you know, incidents of climate change, extreme weather, flooding in our city that we saw only, you know, this weekend, we need to be prepared for that and accept that these instances are going to become more frequent and more severe. And we need to make sure that we're in the right position to be able to deal with that. So it's important that we get ahead of the decision-making. And I think that's probably been an approach that, you know, has been considered in some respects in the organisation up to now. But we need to make sure that we're doing that across every decision.
I'll just let councillor Sanga come back to that and then we'll answer councillor Auckland's point. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just to come back. So this time next year, when we get hopefully the next edition of this, will that kind of appraisal might be in the report by then, or that kind of assessment?
I would like to think so, yes. I mean, what I'm talking about there is a, is a, is a kind of governance methodology. It's a way of analysing decisions. What we, that shouldn't be, you know, what we're also talking about is the impact of those decisions and how much carbon we're saving, actually how we're moving forward with our programme. So they're two distinct things, but two very, very important things. But I hope the former will lead to better outcomes for the latter.
Thank you. And we also had a point, didn't we, from councillor Auckland? Mark, are you able to help us with that?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. And just coming in on that, on that previous question, I had a conversation this morning with someone in the team and we were talking about the wording in the, I think it goes back to some of the wording in the 10-point plan, which is about putting climate at the heart of our, at the heart of the organisation and the heart of our governance and the heart of decision-making. And I think we both agreed, we were talking about another meeting, but saying actually what that needs to be is putting climate at the start of decision-making. It needs to be done when we're taking those in terms of looking at developing a programme, looking at something, for example, a new project, rather than later on down the line when many of those decisions have already been taken. I think we're starting to see some of that coming through in terms of the application of the climate impact assessment. But it's that sort of rigor and making sure that we're using that at the start of all those processes. So that we've got options on the table in terms of being able to look at which of those is going to be the most beneficial to climate action. But just picking up councillor Auckland's question around behaviour change. Yes, I can confirm that we are looking at obviously how we apply behaviour change techniques and looking at models such as COMB. We've been working with colleagues in public health who've been leading a forum on working across various disciplines in the organisation and with, I believe it's colleagues from Sheffield Hallam University as well who are involved in that. But looking at different approaches, both from a, for example, looking at things like retrofit programmes and how we're working with, again, sort of looking at promoting those sorts of programmes. And also with transport schemes as well and looking at the need to approach that from a behavioural change perspective in order to try and get some of those, those gains where it really is going to be reliant on hearts and minds. Because in some instances, the thing is there, the option's there. But it's then actually being able to work with people to see what those other barriers are from their own lived experience as well.
Thank you councillor Gamble-Pew.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah. So obviously, after we've asked, after we've spent this time asking questions of officers on this the operational detail, we will move into our political comments and discussion. Before we do that, I just wanted to take this opportunity to ask any of the officers present if there's anything that you need from us as the political leads of the organisation to empower and enable you to do the best you can do to achieve the net zero goals. Because we can exert that political leadership and that's something we must do. So is there anything that we can do to play our role as the political leads to give you a clearer steer or enable you to move faster and further in the right direction?
Will, are you able to help us out with that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll try. And I really welcome the question. I think, you know, I'd like to take some time to think about that because I think, you know, it's, there are a number of, well, let me start by saying, yes, I do think there are. It's really, really important that we have political leadership in this space. And I think, you know, that's right the way across the political spectrum, but also at all levels really. So we're talking about, perhaps we've discussed today, some of the national government policy around climate change not being, you know, not being conducive to us being able to do things at a local level. But that shouldn't stop us. You know, that shouldn't stop us embarking on an ambitious programme for the city, for the region. I think we are, you know, starting to see some of that. But I think real political leadership across all levels is exactly what we need in order to be able to move the agenda forward. And actually, this organisation faces a number of choices every time it has a committee and every time it goes into a budget setting process. You know, every time a manifesto is produced, you know, they are all points in time where politicians can be absolutely clear with Sheffield and its citizens about their ambitions around climate change. So I think, you know, there are loads of opportunities for that leadership in terms of specifics, in terms of how we as TRC committee move forward. You know, I think there are a number of areas where we could, you know, look at that and see what more we can do in terms of that collaborative approach and how we also bring in our colleagues at S and R as well. Because we have talked about the interrelationship between those two committees. But yeah, I mean, I think, you know, if it's okay, Chair, I think we'd like to sort of take that offer on board and then come back with some suggestions about, you know, some areas that we could work on together on that.
Thank you, Will. That's appreciated. And I'm sure that it's sentiment that everyone on the committee would agree with. councillor Gilligan Kubo?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This one's a quick one. Are you aware of the Climate UK scorecard? And is that something we take into consideration? I've looked at it and sadly, it says that we only scored 21% on transport, which is something for this committee to think about. Do we need to worry about that or is it just another of those scorecards? Because I know there are quite a lot out there.
Mark, I'm sure you've got views on the climate scorecard. I think I've asked a similar question and guidance from your team in the past. I know other local authorities have had concerns about the methodology that should be used in the climate scorecard.
Yes, that's correct, Chair. I think there were some concerns raised around the approach, the methodology. I think the initial concerns were around the method used to collect the information, which was through FOI. And then there was a period of being able to respond and trying to correct some of that. Because it was research on data that was in the public domain. And I think in a lot of examples, Sheffield included, there was information that was available that we pointed the organisation to, but it wasn't included in their assessment. I think one of the sort of points which was circulated by the Local Government Association was that they made the point that they don't encourage the approach of those scorecard methodology. Not that specific route, but obviously generally the sort of approaches around that and recognising that there are potentially inconsistencies in that. So I think there was a question around the approach that was used there. What we were reflecting on is also that we, as along with a number of other cities, use the CDP framework as well, which is internationally recognised. And that we have gone through that process again and come out with a similar score as we did last year, which was with an A minus. So there's obviously some areas where we need to improve and clearly we're working on those. But I think with regards to the scorecard, there are, there are some inadequacies in that. It's been recognised by other cities as well as Sheffield. And perhaps some questions around whether that's an appropriate use of officer time as well in terms of all the FOI data and information we had to provide.
I think that the sentiment is probably that we would hope that organisations would work with us in gathering that data rather than simply just using FOIs as a tool, really. The door is open and we'd love to work with other organisations. I'm mindful of time. Are there any other contributions that people would like to make? Particularly contributions about the way forward with regards to this report? I don't see. Andrew, councillor Sanga?
Sorry, are we sort of drawing a close to contributions at this stage? Because most people said they were going to make comments. I'm happy for all of us not to make comments if that's a way forward, but. It's not my normal way of not, not speaking or something, but that's, that's, speeds it up.
I'm, I'm happy, happy to take the guidance of what the committee would like. Are there any other contributions that the committee would, would, would like to make? Either, either in questions to officers or, or wider points about the report. Councillor Gamble-Pew.
Yeah, just, just very quickly, I think we're in a very uncomfortable position. I think it's positive that we're getting these annual reports and I welcome the fact that we've started that process. I think noting a report which says we've made such limited progress on emission reductions as we have. Whilst also trying to describe the progress and the steps in the right direction that we're making puts us in politically in a very uncomfortable place. And that's not something that sits well with me. And I also think that whilst it's quite right that we hold the government's feet to the fire. And, and flag, flag up just how difficult it is for us to achieve the strides that we need to. Whilst the government's policy and financial constraints hamper us. That, that gives a politically mixed message. And I think that we need to be very clear as a committee and we need to pass on to our colleagues and for yourself as Chair. When this goes to S and R, that, we can't use the national political context as a way of abdicating responsibility. What we need to do is, is to make sure that we prevail and ask ourselves what can we do to move forward? Despite the national constraints that are placed upon us. Because we owe it to the citizens who elected us and the citizens of the future to get this right and time's running out. It's an emergency and we need to behave accordingly.
Councillor Sanger?
Yeah, I'll try, thanks, Chair. I'll try and keep my comments in the same spirit as councillor Gamble-Pew. I'd mention that the, the culture war, war from the current government doesn't help in this. You know, there, there is lots of positives in this report. There's lots of positives in the way this city. Announced a climate and biodiversity crisis in 2018 and set the 2030 net zero target. And it's right that we've got a process and it's right that we've got, we're reporting back regularly. I, I share colleagues' frustration from across all parties and the, of the, the challenge we have for 2030. But we, it's our job as politicians to provide leadership and to provide hope for citizens. Particularly the younger generation, particularly my children's generation and, you know, the generations that follow. That we have, we as political leaders, we need to tell us what, what were we doing at this time? We are making progress. We made a decision last year in terms of keeping the sustainability team and keeping. Climate challenge issues on the agenda and, and we were right to do that. But it, it frustrates me. It frustrates me how slow this has been and, you know, I've been, I've been pushing this and losing battles on this for so many years. But the 1.5 is still there. It's holding on at COP20 at eight by the skin of its teeth, by, by fingernails. All we can do in Sheffield is show leadership and do the right thing for Sheffield and Sheffield's people. We've clearly got some route maps. We need to deliver on those route maps and we need to, you know, it needs to go forward cross-party. We need to do what we can across all committees. And, you know, it's good that we've got some real strong partners in Sheffield, but the climate challenge target we've set ourselves for 2030 is the right target. We've just got to find ways of making sure that we're, we're doing that across corporately and, and, and working with our partners across the city. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sanger. Just going to take the, the view of committee just to extend our guillotine by a final 30 minutes. That's to be done by, I think, 12 minutes past five. Are people minded to do that? And we will, we'll move forward. I, I think it's probably really important to reflect on the contributions that people have made. Because providing that hope is really so important, isn't it? That people have mentioned today, particularly when we see that we've got a government nationally that lacks the ambition to fund the interventions. That we need as a city to decarbonise at the speed that's really required. I, I think I'd just like to take the opportunity to mention two projects that I've touched on during the past month. I think it was really good to visit Sheffield College to see the heat pump and solar PV project. That's really helping us to train the engineers that we need to retrofit homes in the city. Green jobs for the next generation, upskilling young people that I once taught as a teacher with the skills that are needed for the next hundred years. I'm also really excited by the work that we're doing to create an expanded heat network. To bring the lowest cost solutions to decarbonise heat in Sheffield. And that means learning lessons from cities around the world to roll out cheap, secure and sustainable energy to, to families and businesses. Using waste energy from commercial properties and other innovative solutions. Those two are many projects that the city council is pushing forward on really. So that therefore moves us on to taking a view on what we do with this paper. Can I ask whether the committee is content with us agreeing the annual climate progress report from 2022/23? And the recommendations that are outlined in the paper? I can see nods. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mark and, and Will and Tom for adding additional clarity to the report officers have put together. That then takes us to item number nine, number 10, which is the Kellam and Neepsend parking review. Which David has been sat throughout the meeting waiting for. And I'm very sorry, David.
It's not a problem, Chair. I shall, I shall try and be succinct in terms of the introduction to the report. So the first phase of the Kellam Neepsend parking scheme was approved in July 2023. With the approved proposal including a recommendation to undertake further engagement with businesses in Neepsend. To see if there could be changes to the proposed traffic regulation order to mitigate the effect of it. This report considers the results of extra parking surveys and the outcome of the additional engagement with businesses in Neepsend. The report does not look to revisit any of the decisions made in July 2023. Section one covers the detail of the original proposal with appendix A, they're providing analysis of several of the key things that came out of the TRO consultation. Repeating the text from the July report, as they should be considered in advance of approving a pay and display permit scheme in Neepsend. However, the additional consultation was based more on what a, a pay and display or permit scheme should look like. Rather than the principle of whether there should, whether there should be one. Section three of the report provides a summary of the feedback from the additional business consultation. Around 160 businesses were contacted via an online survey. And the offer of a face-to-face conversation was taken up by seven larger businesses in the area. Feedback from the 28 responses was that the, the preference would be for a, a scheme that operated in days and times linked to the outcome of the parking surveys. And flexibility of availability of permits, especially for, for those larger companies in the area. A more detailed report on the business feedbacks provided in appendix C. Section three also provides some detail of sample surveys, a sample parking surveys. And appendix D shows that parking demand and patterns by street are similar in 2023 to those in 2028. The highest demand across most of the Neepsend area is still weekday daytime, although there is still sufficient and current anticipated future demand to implement a scheme seven days a week. The analysis leads to a proposal to have slightly different operating days and times within Neepsend. To help manage a local situation around Bardwell Road and Boyland Street by reducing the potential impact on, on parking on Neepsend Lane. Where parking is available on evenings and at weekends. Following the additional business engagement, the recommendation would be to amend the original scheme. And to approve a more flexible approach to the number of permits issued to businesses during the implementation of the scheme. With operating bays on Monday to Friday between nine and three o'clock on Boyland Street, Bardwell Road. And Neepsend Lane on the section between Rottland Road and Bardwell Road. And operating Monday to Sunday, again, nine, oh nine hundred to three o'clock or fifteen hundred in bays in other areas of, of Neepsend. The aspiration would be to work with businesses to reduce their, their, their permit allocations in the future. While, while the two pound all-day tariff on a Sunday in Neepsend would be retained. The monitoring of the effects of the scheme will be critical and this does have a cost. The recommendations also include a review of the detail of the scheme after 12 months. Again, with any costs associated with this would need to be come from next year's, next year's capital programme. I'd be happy to take any questions about the report or its recommendations.
Thank you, David, for running us through that. Councillor Mizerow?
Thank you. I'd like to declare an interest of sorts because I'm one of the councillors for this ward. Thanks to you and your team, David, for the additional work that you've done working with businesses in Neepsend. I've got a few questions. So can I confirm that the following incentives are being offered to businesses in Neepsend? In order to reduce the demand for parking and parking permits? And to enable staff to travel in more sustainable ways? Allocation for cycle parking, give it a go, public transport season tickets? And localised expansion of the e-bike trial scheme? And how will businesses be, be made aware of these? I know that cycle parking is really useful for future travel plans too. I know people that work night shifts and currently are reliant on a car because there isn't public transport. But there isn't any cycle parking or secure cycle parking at their work? When they'd like them to be, where they'd like it to be. So that prevents them from biking in. And it would be good to have that additional parking and to give people the option of doing that, if not now, then in future. Could the application form be altered to ask employees where they're travelling from, what time they started, how many people they employed, how many vehicles they use? With the aim of using this information for monitoring and future travel planning? I noticed in 3.20 of the report that the aspiration is to reduce the number of permits used in future years. What's being envisaged to enable this? It might be the answer to my earlier question. Also, will the council be recruiting two additional CEOs as per 4.2.8? Creating two jobs rather than filling out existing enforcement resources would provide residents with something extra for their permit fees? And finally, will the CEOs also be enforcing parking on junctions? Which currently makes things really dangerous for people walking in the area. Thank you. That's my question.
David?
So I've quickly scribbled down there, councillor Mizerow. So if I've got, if I've missed one or two, please don't, you know, please don't hesitate to come back with me. Yes, in terms of allocation for cycle parking and, and the e-bike scheme, that was actually approved as part of the first phase in, in, in July. So yes, there's allocations within the, you know, within the scheme cost, you know, to enable a trial public transit, trial, try a public transport, you know, scheme. As well as, as well as expanding the, the existing, you know, e-bike, e-bike offer that we have. How will we make people aware of this? We'll, we'll certainly look to make people aware of it through the, you know, through the permit application process. You know, which will, which will hopefully, if the scheme's approved, you know, start, you know, start relatively early on in the new year. You mentioned about cycle parking as well. Again, there's an allocation, there's an allocation within the original, the original June scheme, sorry, July scheme. For, you know, for, for parking in the area. We, we, we quite often get requests for, you know, for cycle parking across different areas of the city. So we've got, we've got a reasonable base of, of, of information or knowledge of where people would like cycle, cycle spaces in this area. It was also, you know, reasonably frequently mentioned through the traffic regulation order process that people would like more spaces, but not necessarily told us where. So that's something we definitely need to, need to do a little bit more work on. But there is an allocation within the original, the original approval in, in July to enable us to do that. Yes, the application, the application form is, is, is something that we would be keen, you know, to provide. Or to ask for additional information from, from, you know, from, from businesses. I think we're, we're, we're looking at, you know, flexibility, but the flexibility has got to be, you know, proportionate to the business need. We know a number of businesses in the area, you know, start at, you know, start at six o'clock in the morning or earlier. Where, you know, where, where, where public transport is, 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 is less available. But yes, we, we can, we can certainly ask, you know, where, where people are coming from, you know, how many people they employ. We've already got some base information in terms of the number of businesses, in terms of their, their start and finish time. I guess one of the downsides is, is that in the, you know, as, as it stands at the minute, we don't actually have a, a travel plan officer. You know, who works, you know, who works within, you know, within our, within our team. So we can, we can, we can ask for the information, but I think the reality is, is that we'll be using it for a, you know, for a, you know, for a, a, a check in, in. In parts, try and make sure that we're, we're, you know, providing an appropriate number of, of, of permits for businesses and get in touch with us. You know, rather than for, you know, any more, very more proactive. You know, you know, travel planning with businesses. Because as it stands at the minute, we just don't have, we just don't have that particular resource. You asked about civil enforcement officers. Yes, we're already, we're, we're engaging with parking services around, around their, around their recruitment. Because the aim would be to have additional resources in the area, rather than using the existing resources over a larger number of, larger number of schemes. I think the report mentioned the current assumption based on costs of around 112,000 a year would, would be, would be two additional wardens in that, in that area. But that would be for Kellam and Neepsend.
Oh, councillor Mizerow, can you just turn your microphone on?
Sorry, yeah, it was about enforcing parking on junctions, which is a safety issue for pedestrians.
Yeah, apologies. I've not written that one down. So yeah, in, in terms of the, in terms of the scheme design, one of the, you know, one of the, one of the bases, bases of the design. Was around including restrictions at, at junctions. So as there'll be, as there'll be restrictions there, you know, to enforce that are fairly, are fairly clear on the highway. As opposed to potentially, you know, obstructing a drop curb. Where, where there are restrictions, the civil enforcement officers will, you know, will be able to enforce of them. And as I say, you know, one of the reasons that a number of spaces in the area has been reduced so much. Is to make it easier for, particularly for larger vehicles to get around the area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Fox?
Thank you. I'm just looking at the cost of this. You stated it was going to be 539,000. And then the income would be 170k and then we've got to find 112k for offices. That's a difference of 58k year in and year out. So is that, that's going to cost us money every year? Is that not the case?
Thank you, councillor, councillor Fox. It's actually the other way around. So, so the income is currently higher than the, higher than the expected cost. Based on an assumption of two civil enforcement officers. That, that we, that it, it could well be that we, that we, we'll be taking on additional enforcement officers. But I think as the, as the, the report highlights, it is that the estimation of income on, on a scheme is really quite, is really quite difficult. So it's very much a case of monitoring to see what actually happens, you know, over the first, over the first few months and certainly over the first year. You know, to see whether, you know, some of the assumptions that have been made actually materialise. Because, for example, it's, we've assumed in here that a relatively small number of spaces will be available for, you know, for pay and display. Because there will be quite a few people, you know, using spaces, you know, either as resident permit holders or, you know, or, or business permit holders. If that, if that, if the, if the, if the take-up of permits, you know, changes slightly, that could have a, a potentially, you know, large impact on the pay. A positive effect on the pay and display income. But I think we're, we're being reasonably cautious in terms of the current estimates. And then, as I say, one of the key things to do over the first, first few, few months of operation is monitor that.
Absolutely.
Back, back in, so looking at, at previous, you know, all the permanent schemes that we've got already existing in the, in the city. Can, is that the case then that we are, they don't cost us money?
So yeah, so that, that's always, that's, that's always, always the plan. Absolutely. The income is, is, is a restricted income though. It can only be used on, it can be only used on certain things. But, you know, our, our revenue business partner, you know, will be, you know, has, has, has gone through some of the assumptions that we've, that we've made. Because yeah, at a time where the, the council's in a difficult financial position, you know, what we don't, what we don't want to be doing is making it, is making it worse. But yeah, as it stands at the minute, what we're saying is, is that the income will be more than the expenditure, but that, that will need closely monitoring.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and I think it's really, really useful question, isn't it, councillor Fox? About income that is generated by some of these schemes and what is done with that income. At present, it isn't overseen by our committee. The spending, the expenditure that it could be used for would have to be very tightly controlled. But it is my view that actually the funds such as that should be used to improve public transport and other such measures as well. And actually, we as a committee should have more oversight of it. Do I have any other contributions? Okay, so that therefore takes us to a decision on this particular item. So do I see that we are all content with it? Do I see any, any dissent from people? See nodding from people? We are content with approving the item. So that item has, has been carried. So thank you very much, David, for bringing the item forward on the Kellam and Neepsend parking review. Very appreciated. We then therefore move on to item 11, sorry, item 12, because we did item 11 beforehand. This is the Clean Air Zone update, the six-month review. And we do only have 20 minutes for this item and the next item as well. So we do need to be mindful of that. Tom.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try and do something very brief then in terms of introduction. But as you have noted from the paper, there is quite a lot of content in the report. So all committee members, well, we are aware, as a result of the high levels of air pollution in the city and the impact that that has on the people living and working here, we introduced a Clean Air Zone in February this year as part of a wider Clean Air Plan that also included the northbound bus lane, bus gate, sorry, on Arundel Gate. And we launched a scheme of financial assistance to support drivers to upgrade and avoid chargers. This report tries to provide an update on that scheme and an indicative view on how the measures have performed in the early months of operation. It's worth highlighting that the review at this stage does not attempt to establish whether we've achieved compliance with the government's ministerial direction around reducing our illegal levels of nitrogen dioxide and whether that's been met, as it is too early to do that. A minimum of 12 months of data across the calendar year 2023 will be required to effectively review that position. And we're working closely with Government's Joint Air Quality Unit, who will be leading that review process. However, there is information that we have collated that assists us in understanding the impact of the CAS. And one of the main indicators at this point in the review of the Clean Air Plan measures is the relative improvement in vehicle emissions by vehicle type. To do that, we have undertaken surveys across the city of the fleets that is driving around. Most recently, we undertook a survey in October of this year, and we have a baseline survey from November in 2022. At section 2.2.2 of the report, the results of this comparison are highlighted, broken down per fleet, and table one on page 10 of the report shows the relative reductions in non-compliant fleet, which is Euro 6 diesel or Euro 4 petrol by vehicle type, both observed inside and outside of the charging zone. What that data is showing is that there's been a significant change since the introduction of the Clean Air Zone and that vehicles have become comparatively cleaner at a greater rate than for some vehicle types than we had expected when we were developing the scheme. So to date, there's been a reduction of 64% of the proportion of non-compliant vehicles in the CAS area, and there's also been an 18% reduction in the non-compliant proportion of vehicles across the wider Clean Air Plan area across the city. The levels of non-compliant vehicles entering into the CAS that are liable to pay the daily charge has been reducing month on month, which is very positive. And the most recent data from October indicates that this is now at 1.11% of traffic entering into the Clean Air Zone, which is the lowest proportion of the fleet since the scheme went live. And it's worthwhile noting that there's a graph in the appendix that highlights that in June, the proportion of non-compliant fleet entering into the Clean Air Zone went up. That's because the end of the local LGV exemption kicked in, along with the end of the local HANIE fleet exemption. But we're at the lowest rate now since we started the scheme. The report also sets out the scale of the uptake in our financial assistance scheme, which was launched in December 2022 and funded from the Clean Air Fund received from government. To date, 946 applicants have received funding through the scheme, and it's expected at this point that our forecasts are that we will have committed up to around £15 million from the applications in process. Appendix one, we have quite a comprehensive breakdown of traffic flows through the city. There's some broad comparisons to national data as well as local data. They clearly highlight the impact of COVID-19 on traffic and traffic movements around the city. Significant reductions during the lockdown periods, but now bouncing back to close to pre-COVID levels. Those surveys and data mirrored between that national position and the Sheffield position. Interestingly, goods vehicles are on the increase, particularly light goods vehicles, so vans, and car usage as well. In terms of more local surveys, the Arundel Gate bus gate has shown a 42% reduction in traffic on the bus gates to date compared to last year. And that will clearly contribute to lower emissions on Arundel Gate. But we do know that there is abuse of that gate. There are still non-authorised trips going through there. But at the moment, that makes up around 5% of trips on a daily basis. And we will continue to review those traffic volumes as part of reviewing that specific element of the Clean Air Plan when we look at the Experimental Traffic Regulation Order that it was introduced under. At this early stage, I think the broad conclusion in terms of traffic data is that there have been no significant changes in observed data and traffic volumes as a result of the Clean Air Zone than we would expect from national and wider local trends. But we'll continue clearly to monitor that. The report highlights a significant issue around bus retrofit. So in supporting people to upgrade, we did secure funding from government to try and continue a Clean Bus Technology Fund-started scheme, which was retrofitting buses, non-compliant buses in the city. The Clean Air Fund we received from government had around £16,000 per bus available to support them to retrofit. So through the Clean Bus Technology Fund, we already had 300 buses upgraded. A further 100 were due to be retrofitted as part of this scheme. However, earlier this year, the Department for Transport identified that there was an issue with bus retrofits in that they were not performing at the equivalent Euro 6 standard that they should have been and had previously been factory tested to produce. That problem has led government to pause their national programme of funding bus retrofits, and locally, we are under that same position. So we haven't undertaken any further retrofits of the bus fleet in Sheffield. And of those buses that are already retrofitted, their performance is yet to be understood. Governments are undertaking a review of this issue at the moment, and we expect to hear the results of that study and further review soon. But at the same time as that review is awaited, we do need to look at further action on our pressing government to take further action, including a call for action within a bid that will be submitted at the end of this week through the National Zebra Zero Emission Bus Fund II. The report at 4.2 sets out the financial implications of the scheme, both the income and the costs. And costs include committed contractual costs, such as those associated with the decommissioning of the scheme. The forecast, financial forecast goes out to 2028, 2029, albeit it should be noted that the scheme may end sooner than that period. What that indicates is that there is expected to be a small surplus, a relatively small surplus this year, and with a peak of around a surplus of around £6.5 million in 2026, 2027. There are limitations on what that surplus can be used for under the Transport Act 2000. Principally, that is around facilitating further local transport improvements that deliver on clean air improvements as well. We set out at 4.2.6 a series of guiding principles and governance principles, which we're recommending that the committee consider and adopt in any decisions on financial surplus and the spend of that. And in order to develop options for the use of the surplus in line with those principles, we're proposing to develop those into a Clean Air Investment Plan and bring that back to committee for consideration at a future date. So with that, moving to the recommendations, we're recommending that the committee acknowledges a significant improvement in fleets upgrades across Sheffield in response to the Clean Air Zone and recognises the positive changes made by vehicle owners in the city and that further promotion of our financial assistance scheme is undertaken and that you endorse the guiding principles and governance principles for the use of the CAS income and that a further plan will come to setting out a Clean Air Investment Plan with a range of potential scheme and programme options that could be funded. The potential for other funds to complement and support delivery through the Clean Air Investment Plan will also be considered as part of that. We further recommend that in response to the risks associated with the performance of bus retrofits, that you request a further update when government publish their review findings. And in developing the Clean Air Investment Plan, that we explore potential use of the Clean Air Fund to further support upgrade of buses. And finally, the committee endorses a continued liaison with government for greater support to fund cleaner bus fleet in Sheffield to mitigate the impacts of the bus retrofit issue on air quality in Sheffield, including through the Zebra II fund bid. So with that, any questions?
Thank you, Tom. And apologies that it's at the very end of the agenda, it's a really important item. I can see that I've got three contributions. We just need to be mindful that by 5.42, we need to either decide to formally vote on whether to proceed to support this item without a debate or to defer this and the next item to the next meeting. I'll just very quickly take, Councilor Fox, maybe take three points together.
I've got a few questions, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Do you want me to carry on or do you want to defer the item?
I think we don't, my view is that we shouldn't defer the item. Let's ask you a question and see whether the meeting agrees.
Okay. So one of the things that you said, that there was no significant changes in observed traffic volumes, is that because people are using public transport or are they not coming into the city? Or have we done an impact on the business community regarding that statement? My next question is the pause on the retrofit on buses, is that? Have we looked at trams? I know that we've got to renew our tram system soon. Would that come in line with retrofitting buses? Would we be able to get some money for that? My third question is, vehicles, fleets, how many Sheffield City Council vehicles are now compliant? Do we have a measure on that? And what about, people have asked me about contracted vehicles, you know, the vehicles, the contracts that we have for the city council that have to come into the city. Do we pay their charges if they have not got compliant vehicles? And displaced traffic, you know, a lot of people are complaining about the bus gates and especially on match days, that they're queuing around the area and they're finding that that's been increased, this is what people are telling me, because of the bus gate and people going to the markets etcetera have been sat in traffic for a lot longer. So has that been monitored? Because clearly when traffic is stood still, then the emissions must be higher. I'll stop there because I could go on.
Thank you, Councilor Fox. Tom.
Thank you, Councilor Fox. In terms of traffic volumes, why hasn't there been a perceptible change? So the Clean Air Zone, again, within traffic levels within the city, the vast majority of traffic driving around the city are cars. So the Clean Air Zone doesn't affect cars, they're not one of the chargeable fleets. So in terms of people coming to visit, coming to shop in the city centre, you know, in effect, the scheme is not a demand management scheme. It is just trying to get cleaner vehicles into the city. So cars are not affected, so in terms of that, there isn't any kind of significant impact. We have looked at different locations across the city, and there is natural variation. There's always variation year to year, month to month. You know, there are much lower traffic levels in the summer period towards the kind of, you know, increase towards Christmas, and then again, it drops off again, December, January increases again. Those broad trends that we're seeing are the same. It is quite hard to kind of identify absolutes within traffic volume surveys. But from what we've seen to date, and in particular, one of the interesting statistics is that we did have our Clean Air Zone cameras working in October 2022 when they were being tested. So they were collecting data, and actually, the amount of vehicles coming into the Clean Air Zone in October 2022 is very, very similar to October 2023. So we don't think it has discouraged people and diverted people from their normal trips. Some of those people may have to pay if they're not compliant. But again, we've seen a much cleaner fleet now in Sheffield and the rates of which people are, kind of, non-compliant rates of people coming in are at their lowest level since the scheme started. So we're not seeing that displaced traffic is an effect on match days because, you know, that's mainly car traffic. Some vehicles may be avoiding the scheme, but by and large, the data isn't highlighting any significant issues. In terms of the pause on retrofit on buses and trams, so trams are a zero emission fleet. Fantastic that the city's got trams and we do want more trams in different places of the city. We want that expansion and we're working with South Yorkshire Merrill Combined Authority on that vision at the moment. In terms of the kind of acid test for clean air, we need to try and make those changes as quickly as possible. So the cost and time scales in particular associated with trams and introducing new tram routes are much, much longer than we need to in terms of Clean Air Challenge. What is a shorter timescale is bringing in cleaner buses into the city. So diesel Euro 6 that are actually performing at diesel Euro 6 is what we'd forecast. That's not happening as a result of the retrofits. So we are pushing now to move towards zero emission buses in the city. And that really is something that we need to work with the operators, with the MCA, but most importantly, that we feel government need to support us on, given that we've delivered on all of our Clean Air Plan commitments. The council fleet, again, apologies, I don't have the absolute answer, but we can get that for you. There has been a very progressive fleet renewal programme within the city, and that has looked at getting to a clean air compliance level. We do now need to move towards a decarbonised fleet, but we'll have to come back to you on the absolute numbers on that. In terms of contracted vehicles, no, we do not pay directly the charges associated with the contracts that we have, the big contracts that we have. And I think that's covered all the points, thank you.
I think there's a mistake on page 11. It's saying 2024 and I think it must be 2023. Page 11, it says authorisation has been reduced from July 2024. I think it means 2023, just to know.
Yep, that spot on that is a mistake, sorry, it's 23.
We'll seek to change that and thank you for spotting it, Councilor Fox. And we now have a minute and a half really until our guillotine falls. So realistically, we have to work out a way to proceed. We have two options for this item and the next item, I'll ask you both separately. For this item, you can either choose to defer the item for further discussion at another opportunity, or you can now choose to vote on it formally. My view and from the nods around the room is that we should vote on it formally. Do I have agreement? Superb. So therefore, do I see that the meeting is content with agreeing the paper on the Clean Air Zone six-month review? I do, I see agreement, everyone's nodding and there's no disagreement, so that therefore has been passed. That therefore takes us to working out what we're going to do with the final item, which is the Local Neighbourhood Transport Complimentary Programme with an amazing acronym of N-L-A-N-T-C-P, the Road Safety Fund Programme for 23 to 24. I have to ask for a little bit of. I have to ask for a little bit of clarification, I think, from both David and Tom about the way forward with this one. If we were going to defer the item, which could be one of the decisions that the committee could make, what would happen to approving the variations and the recommendation, which is point two in Roman numerals, approve the variations within the programme, noting the individual projects will still need to go through the council's capital processes? The concern would be that it would significantly delay things. Would you be able to give us your steer?
Yes, Chair, I think in terms of the number of changes, yeah, they do still have to go through the capital approval process. So it would have the effect of delaying a number of schemes, you know, potentially even including the Kellam Neat End scheme that we've just discussed at the committee. So can I just ask, if a conversation was had and a decision was then made afterwards, is it just more open to challenge? Because as you rightly point out, a lot of what we're potentially talking about in terms of the programme report, well, it still then has to go through strategy and resources for the, you know, for the actual decision-making process, as part of the actual decision-making process, for the capital approval process that we have.
Thank you, Chair. I think the point that you're making is that effectively we're noting it, and it still has to go through the capital approval process, but ask a clarification from Robert.
Yeah, today's meeting is ending imminently, so it's not, we can't have the artificiality of sitting here and sort of going through it. It's for members and obviously public being interested in the subject, such as whether they're here or not in person, and for members to take a view on whether they're willing to okay at this stage, or whether they'd like to call it back to another meeting.
Thank you, that was really clear, and thank you David as well. I think therefore it makes sense to ask the committee whether they are content with us moving forward to approve this particular item, so that would be item 13. I can see nods that people are obviously mindful that delaying would potentially cause potential issues down the road. I can see that the committee is in agreement that we would therefore approve item 13 formally. So I hope that is helpful, clarity for you as well, David. So we have agreed item 13 formally. Thank you very much to colleagues, to council officers, but also to councillors for persevering with our very long meeting today, really appreciated, and I hope everyone has a great Christmas and a happy new year.